We're preparing to livestream our webinar.
Yep, it's live on YouTube. Hello YouTube.
All right.
Okay, are you guys ready for it to go live? Or audience members? Okay. It's broadcasting to everyone.
Okay, welcome to the August 2020 meeting of the Clifton Town Council. As we have been doing during the pandemic. We're meeting electronically by Zoom. And that is pursuant to legislation that was passed by state legislature to allow electronic meetings during the pendency of the pandemic as well as a number of resolutions that were passed by the town council. We're doing our best with the media. Manage it and allow full participation. I know that there are people signed up directly on Zoom and there are a number of people. Trying to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to see what we're doing. And we've got a very full agenda again. For this meeting, so we'll try to move through this as. Providing full opportunity for everyone to comment, so we'll start with the report of the town clerk.
There you go.
The July 7th regular minutes and the July 22nd special meeting minutes. Only one minor correction was suggested and made.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
With with the correction?
With with the correction, yes.
Motion of the second, we'll do a roll call, it's the only way to keep track, Holloway I.
Ephras I.
Melon I.
No.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
All right, great, anything else clerk?
That's it.
Treasurers report.
No, you have to unmute.
You're muted.
No, you're still muted. There you go.
Okay. My apology. The treasurer's report is for the period ended July 31, 2020. It represents all the transactions that have flowed through the town for the month of July. The summary of the cash balances report reflects funds of $1,363,474.57. And there's a detailed summary of that. The the profit and loss summary by fund is highlighted in the submission that was presented to all the council members. The first highlight relates to the Federal Cares Funding Act revenues. In FY 20, which is the fiscal year that just ended at June 30, the town received $51,433 in COVID funding through Fairfax County. The town is a sub recipient of the funding. And the allocation was based on the 2018 US Census and submitted as part of Fairfax County's application. The funding must be used for reimbursement of COVID-19 related costs incurred from March 1st through December 31st, 2020. $1,166.99 was expended and reported in FY 20. The balance of the COVID funds that are deferred to FY 21 are $49,766.1. $40,000 was allocated to the Clifton IDA that awarded grants on behalf of the town to eligible town businesses. The balance remaining to cover the town's costs in FY 21 is $9,766.1. So that's a very quick summary of the the CARES Act activity to date. I'd want to highlight the the, let's see, the Pink House rental reflects an $800 rent relief to Bell Jar and an allocation of $1,450 toward the August rents that were received in the latter part of July.
A quick question, I don't understand the number 1,450, I would have expected 1,600 or something, why 1,450?
Well, we received 800 of the payment that was received from Bell Jar is actually related to August because of the rent relief. And we also received 650 from the other tenants of the Pink House in advance for the August rent.
Why are we receiving 650 from the other tenants?
That one of them just paid early.
Oh, oh, there there are two.
Yeah, that's all.
They have, we received half, okay.
That's right, that's right. Okay, um, under taxes and permits. Highlights are the car rental distribution of 315 from Virginia. The ARB permit of $10, B-Pole receipts of $85, state communication sales tax of 394 and a rolling railroad tax of 1,562. And a use permit for 75. Under contractual expenses, highlights for July reflect the VML dues of $408 and the annual insurance premiums for FY 21. I'm sorry, I just lost my place, of 5,394. The July grounds maintenance of $700, mowing of $600, trash collection of 118. Town COVID expenses of $588.66. And the Clifton IDA CARES Act grants awards of 40,000. Those have not been adjusted from the cash balances as yet because they have not cleared the bank. And they were issued on the 31st of July. So those are the highlights for July. Looking forward to the next month, we have our John Marshall CDs that are coming, that actually matured on August 1st. They are for one year. I did talk this over with Bill and with the town council's concurrence, we'd like to just roll those, renew those for the one year. It the 65, the 0.65% is the current interest rate for the one year CD with John Marshall Bank. And that's noted on the cash balance report. So that would require a motion, I guess.
We need to adopt the treasurer's report and then we can talk about going forward.
Okay, okay.
There are a couple of things going, I think there are three things going forward. I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
All right, motion of second, roll call, Holloway I.
Ephras I.
Melon I.
McDonald I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
All right, there are three other things under the treasurer, one is reinvestment of the the three CDs, the second one is a council member to sign town checks and the third one is engaging the auditor for fiscal year 1920. We'll take those in in order. We have three CDs, they they just, they were one year, they just matured. And our proposal is to put them back in for another year at the obviously low interest rate, but better than the other interest rates. You go to a year and a half, two years, the interest rate is no different. If you go less than that, it's a little lower. On the other hand, we don't want to keep addressing these CDs every month. Putting them back in for one year at the same place also requires more paperwork. So that's the proposal, the interest rate is 0.65%. Thoughts?
I say we just put them back in for a year.
Yep, in agreement.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reinvest the three certificates of deposit that are at John Marshall Bank, back with John Marshall Bank for one year.
Second.
Any discussion? Do a roll call, Holloway I.
Ephras I.
Melon I.
McDonald I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
All right, next item, we'll go to the third one, which is engage the auditor for fiscal year 1920. We've been using the same auditor for the last 10 years or something. And the auditors come back with their engagement letter now that the fiscal year is closed to do the audit and the pricing is the same as last year. Any questions?
No, just to make, I want to make sure of something, since I just signed a gazillion different documents with the county on this. The audit that we have also does an audit for the IDA.
Yes.
It includes, okay.
It does include it and this year they said, oh, we won't change the price, but next year the IDA will be so busy, so busy, we might have to change the price. I wanted to go back to them and have a discussion about reality, but rather than do that, I just wanted to. Yes, we'll do the IDA, yes, it'll be the same.
Okay.
Okay, so make a motion to engage the same auditor that we used for last year at the same price for the audit for FY 19.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Holloway I.
Ephras I.
Melon I.
McDonald I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
All right, third treasurer item, a new council member to sign town checks, let me be clear on that. We have three signatories currently Marilyn, myself and Melissa. Melissa's going to step back on signing checks and we want to replace Melissa with another council member, does it mean? What it means is, and I think this is fantastic, I'm a fan, no checks get issued by the town unless they're signed by two people. And that means that somebody signs it and the other person is looking over their shoulder, so it's a great process. But to make sure there's always two people around to do it, we need someone else. In the interim, we we have it covered, Marilyn and I are signing checks. But we need another council member to step forward and say, I'll sign the checks as well. What's involved is looking at who the check goes to, is it really how the expenditure. Moving your hand with it. So not super hard, but you're also aware of what's going on, so is there anyone who's interested in filling that role?
I'll do it, Bill.
Awesome, okay, thanks Pat. All right, I'll make a motion to point Pat Klein as the third signator.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion of second. We'll do a roll call vote, Holloway I.
Ephras I.
Melon I.
McDonald I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
All right, and then Marilyn will give you some papers because the bank has to know what your signature. Okay, Marilyn, anything else?
Yes, two things. I want to thank Melissa for being an excellent support in signing checks and reviewing textile bank statements for all this time. You've been great, Melissa, thank you so much. And I also want to thank Patrick for volunteering to fill that role moving forward. The other thing I wanted to just let the council know is that we did receive an invoice for the election for that was done in May and the invoice is for $4,283.97, which is four times about the amount we are used to pay. Our budget for FY 20 was $1,000 for the elections. I did finally get through to the the elections office today. And they will be getting back with me tomorrow with an explanation of what the full cost is. And we'll move from there and I'll I'll let you know. Let's see here, I was going to recommend that if the payment is required prior to the September meeting, that the council might want to designate Bill as the mayor to authorize and approve the invoice for the payment. Or we can just say we won't be able to pay it until after the September meeting.
My my view is this is in dispute and not in dispute a little. It it, I couldn't believe it when we saw the number. We've gone back, every past election's like $700, last time was $1,200. This time, as you know, I think 20 people voted or something. And they sent us a bill for $4,300, which was with no notice, no nothing, no explanation. It is possible that they'll claim that because of COVID, an extra $3,000 is required. Honestly, I don't know how, because they weren't doing the cleaning. But we need an explanation from them, if they claim somehow an extra, literally four times the cost was required because of COVID, maybe in that case we get them to to say that and we have something that we can do through CARES Act. But to just say they're doing the same thing they've done every time for the last 10 times, but the price is four times as high. Does not sound right, we need to probe into it before authorizing.
Clarification on that, Bill or Marilyn, who exactly do we pay? Are 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 they a contractor to us?
It's a it's a bill that we receive from Fairfax County Elections.
Does it have a department?
It is Fairfax County, it's just the Office of Elections.
So just, that's what I thought, just to be aware of this, Bill, I don't think we could use CARES Act money for that. Because you'd be, it's the same thing as the Bell Jar problem. You'd be having money going around, so. I totally agree with you that we have to fight that number, but don't expect that we could use the CARES Act money for it.
Okay. How do we get a quote, how do we get a quote on that in advance next time around? It's been, you know, being exposed to whatever comes in after the fact, this is not where we want to be.
Agreed. I I will say, when I voted, there was probably three times as much staff there as there had been in previous years. Like, I have no idea, I think, I think, I I do think it's related to COVID. I think they wanted to have enough people and everybody was spaced out and they had, you know, dispose of like had pens that people took with, could take with them and, you know, there was definitely a lot more stuff that was done. I didn't intend to vote in person, but ultimately did. And from what I saw, it was a different experience than usual, more supplies, more people.
So you were saying, Daryl, that they were anticipating that there would be no voting the day of the vote?
They were anticipating there would be more voting, it looked like.
Yeah, more voting.
Yeah.
In advance, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I don't know, I mean, there was definitely more mail-in voting, you know, in this year's election than in-person voting. And maybe there's costs associated with that, that I can, I'm shocked they didn't provide an itemized invoice to begin with. That seems a little, a little odd.
Or any explanation whatsoever for a four times cost increase, so we need, we need them. We need them to explain what the, you know, 400%.
Maybe they, maybe they sent us Herndon's invoice, we should find out what Herndon got them.
Yeah, I mean, it it could be, so there's more to do on this.
Yep.
We do have to pay this, agreed with Reagan, we need to ask them, what are you guys doing? And in the future, we need you to propose something because this really was a complete shock and surprise and, you know, it's what, $200 a voter or something like that? So we'll, we'll dig into it more, we'll have a response at the next meeting, but we're not going to pay it till we have an explanation.
So no need to authorize you to pay it in the meantime, in other words?
I wouldn't want to pay it in the meantime.
All right.
And if we have to, we'll involve our supervisor and the chairman and everybody else, but first thing is, what, you need to explain what happened. And what the basis is for the massive cost increase, particularly in a time when revenues are down, it's just not, maybe people needed work. But we need an explanation.
Agreed.
And based on the.
By the way, Bill, when you're, when you're talking to them, it may be if they say that it was COVID expenses that they can get reimbursed for the COVID expenses from from the feds, we can't circular, do it in circular.
Yeah, Marilyn, that would be useful, if they for some reason took it upon themselves to add a whole bunch of additional costs that we didn't ask for. Because they thought they wanted to do it for COVID, perhaps they can cover it out of their money.
Yeah.
The delta.
Good point.
Between, you know, like, look, we'll pay the 1,200 whatever dollars from last time, but the additional, we'd like you to pursue that yourself. Okay, anything else from the treasurer?
The only other thing I wanted to let the council members know is that I will be on vacation and away from town on September 7th through 8th. And from September 18th through 28th. Just to let you know.
All right, we'll move on to citizens' remarks and here's how this is going to work. We've got five people signed up. But under this part, citizens' remarks, we're only going to have the banner and the town decal discussion. The discussion of native species, natural landscaping, I I'd like to do that under native natural landscaping and bluebird, if anything, when we talk about bluebird, it seems to me it would make more sense at that time. So for banner and town decal, that's Corey Hinderstein, Bethany Latique, Dawn and Netchard are the three.
Mayor Holloway, have I been given the floor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Mayor Holloway and Vice Mayor Ephras and all members of the town council for your volunteer service to our town. My name is Corey Hinderstein, I live on Chestnut Street in Clifton. The term concerned citizen is a cliche, but I asked for the floor today to talk about the banner in support of racial justice because I'm very concerned about how the debate among council members went at the last special session. One or more criminals stole the sign from Main Street, that is what they are, criminals, they're not protesters, they are not opposing voices and they are not concerned citizens. While I cannot know what the motivation was of the criminals in stealing the banner, the effect is that they silence the voices of the citizens of Clifton, our elected representatives and a wider community who at every opportunity input has gone on the record in support of a banner that says, welcome to Clifton where black lives matter. The overwhelming majority of speakers at the first special meeting supported it, 14 of 16 speakers at the July town council meeting and 100% of speakers at the second special meeting. Three times, the citizens of Clifton and the surrounding area have been invited to share their opinions, including those who would oppose the wording on the banner, and three times, no such opposition has appeared. The criminals who tore down the banner and destroyed town property were too cowardly to speak on the record. That should tell us something about the value of those individuals' opinion. But unfortunately, the criminal's opinion is the one the council is now taking into account and not the citizens who have put their names on the record. In raising the banner that says, welcome to Clifton where black lives matter, Clifton has aligned itself with such radical and fringe organizations as Major League Baseball, Mary Kay Cosmetics and Walmart, whose corporate statement stated that their goal was, quote, "to help replace the structures of systemic racism and build in their place frameworks of equity and justice that solidify our commitment to the belief that, without question, black lives matter." So this is not an extreme position, it is a moral, just and equitable position. Those who seek to link the words black lives matter with broader, extreme or distasteful views need to be heard for what they're actually saying, that black lives don't matter, or at least not as much as some others. Now, where are we as a town? We've been silenced by criminals and we're backing down to bullies, hiding behind their keyboards to write letters that primarily have postmarks from outside of our town. This town council and all of you stood up to do the right thing and I wonder why you won't do it again. Sadly, I question whether my words or those of my fellow citizens are even being heard. At the last meeting, the council had already decided what it wants to do. You've already agreed on new language for the banner and delayed a vote so that you could meet your minimum legal obligation to hear public comments. That obligation is not just to hear comments, but to listen to them. And based on the agenda for this meeting and the agenda item that's on later that already has wording for the banner, the outcome is already decided. And that's why I'm a concerned citizen today. So I call on the council to stand by your original vote. Don't let the criminals win, don't let the most aggressive voices drown out the passionate majority. I know Robert's Rules of Order, I challenge any council member to make a motion immediately after public comment to reinstall the banner with the original wording, welcome to Clifton where black lives matter. And let it complete what was remaining on its original 60-day commitment. If that motion got a second, which I hope it would, there would have to be a vote. Would those of you who voted for it the first time, vote against it tonight? Sometimes there is right and wrong, we live in a civil war town around which tens of thousands lost their lives for right. We're not being asked to sacrifice even a fraction that much. So I simply ask, at this moment in history, will you be wearing blue or gray? Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Bethany Latique is next.
Okay, can y'all hear me okay? Okay.
Yes.
Dear town council members, my name is Bethany Latique and I live on Chapel Road in Clifton and thank you for taking my comments and for taking up the issue of the banner, the stolen banner. I'm in support of the town raising a new banner with our original messaging stating, welcome to Clifton where black lives matter. I know there is discussion, discussion, well-intentioned discussion of pivoting to some some new language. But I find that problematic for at least two reasons. First, the banner was stolen by vandals who committed a crime, a crime of hate against our town and its people, the overwhelming majority of whom espouse support for the banner stating unequivocally that black lives matter. To change the wording, to pivot now, only gives power to those who have violated our town, who violated us and who violated the people, those black lives we were wishing to uplift with our words. The BLM movement has grown monumental monumentally and that growth, that promise of justice for black lives has been met, as it's always been met in America, with backlash, threats, name-calling and a crusade to beat back racial justice and equality and equality centering on black lives. The town council must not cede its commitment to the BLM movement at this juncture, to do so would be a mistake. Placing us on the wrong side of history and the wrong side of justice. Now, secondly, I have been working in partnership with some 30-plus residents of the town and our neighbors who live in surrounding communities, together we have formed a racial justice working group of, as many have mentioned previously in previous town council meetings. Our mission is to advance racial equality, justice and healing in Clifton. To achieve our mission, we state that we aim to center the voices of Black, Indigenous and people of color to guide our racial justice. To achieve our mission, we state that we aim to center the voices of Black, Indigenous, and people of color to guide our racial justice work. Every person of color I have talked to about the banner has stated that they would like the wording of the banner to remain the same, "Welcome to Clifton where black lives matter." Now, I wanna, I want us to remember how we got here. Trayvon Martin was murdered, Michael Brown was murdered, Freddie Gray, Sandra Bland, Ahmaud Aubrey, Breonna Taylor, George Floyd. The BLM movement is about them and so many other black lives cut short by anti-black racism. And today, I grieve one more black life, that of Congressman John Lewis. So I'll end with a final plea. As John Lewis has called us to do, get in good trouble, necessary trouble, and help do your part, town council, to redeem the soul of America. Do not let hate and racism and the power of divisiveness influence you. Please hold firm and affirm that black lives still matter in Clifton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Donna Netchard speaking about a town decal.
Okay, I had to unmute myself. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, when, after the, this is not related to the Black Lives Matter banner. Um, there was some, after we did this, uh, thing with the Second Baptist Church, and we were asked to maybe stop by to survey if there were any, any activity that was irregular or cars that were not local. Someone suggested that we have some kind of a sticker or decal, since we don't have our plates anymore. Someone has volunteered to design it for free, her parents have just volunteered to pay for the production of all the cost up to the production of, and I guess they're thinking of something like those oval things you see, like Outer Banks, Bethany Beach, you know, the, uh, the identifier things. And I don't know how you control it, because anybody could actually buy one. Uh, but is there any thought about identifying who we are as we drive around, that we are members of the Clifton community?
First, I just want to point out that we do still have the historic Clifton plates, and they are still available for purchase by residents and by anyone who is employed in the town boundaries.
Okay.
To put that out there.
Right. And I'm just asking the question because someone volunteered to do this for us. Um, and I, I volunteered to bring it to the council. So how do you feel about a sticker that somebody could buy at the Clifton store that says, "Clifton, Virginia"? Black and white with the black in the oval like they do in a hundred other different towns. Does that, is that good, bad? They don't have to pay tax to do it, they, we could charge for it and it would go to the town. But anybody could buy them, so how would you regulate it? I have questions myself. I just thought I'd run it by you guys.
Just my quick thoughts are, it, it's a good idea. Um, you wouldn't be able to regulate it to, to who would be a buyer. Whoever would buy it and stick it on their car presumably would have goodwill towards the community. If you see O B X or, you know, that doesn't mean they necessarily own a house on the Outer Banks, but maybe they just love the Outer Banks. And I think we'd want to figure out what it would look like. You know, would it be three letters, or two letters, or some words? And then decide whether it's something we want to do, but my, my inclination is, it seems like a positive idea. And I think it would be, uh, available generally to people to do. It, it sounds like a good thing.
Okay, I'm just, was gonna, I'm just doing this for the young lady who is the graphics designer, whose parents who are locally based, they live in Clifton, who would pay for anything to get it up to production. Um, so should I maybe ask her to present a few of her ideas as a designer, does, for the project? Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm satisfied, and I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, I'm signing off.
Alright. Oh, yes. Uh, moving on to the planning commission.
I'd like to make a motion.
Cool.
I'd like, I'd move to, uh, hang a banner, uh, above Main Street in the same location that states, "Welcome to Clifton where black lives matter."
I will not second that, but anyone else is welcome to, because we have an item on the agenda for that, and I have people who want to speak before we get to that, but that has nothing to do with what it is.
I'll second the motion.
We'll bring it up for a vote.
Oh, aye.
Melan, aye.
Holloway, nay.
Ephros, nay.
McDonald, nay.
Line, nay.
Alright, can we go on to planning commission? That means Kathy.
I'm here. Uh, first item on the planning commission is our review of the application for a final construction use permit from the Hankins for construction of a garage mudroom addition totaling three hundred and forty-five square feet to their main dwelling, located at one-two-seven-two-seven Clifton Heights Lane. It was confirmed construction is complete. All required building permits were obtained, and the addition was built as required by the certificate, uh, the architectural approved by the, uh, A R B, copies of which were reviewed by the planning commission. So the planning commission recommends a final use permit be approved.
Uh, we'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the planning commission with regard to a final use permit for the Hankins at one-two-seven-two-seven Clifton Heights Lane.
Second.
Any discussion? Holloway, aye.
Ephros, aye.
Melan, aye.
Donald, aye.
Oh, aye.
Line, aye.
Next.
Next, the planning commission reviewed the final use permit application from the Hindersteins for removal of a pool decking, fill leveling of space with the construction of a patio fireplace and retaining wall located at one-two-eight-zero-one Chestnut Street. The preliminary use permit was issued pursuant to a plan of development, which plan addressed the necessary requirements for land disturbing activity in excess of twenty-five-hundred square feet and was reviewed by the town engineer. It was confirmed construction is complete, all required permits have been obtained. Planning commission recommends that a final use permit be approved.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, final use permit.
Second. Any discussion? Holloway, aye.
Ephros, aye.
Melan, aye.
McDonald, aye.
Oh, aye.
Line, aye.
Next.
Planning commission reviewed an application from Donna Netchard for a use permit in a residentially zoned location, one-two-seven-one-four Chestnut Street, for a home business by Village Time Savers. Planning commission recommends the town council approve the application with following conditions. That the home business is a service business, providing animal care errands and other forms of time-saving assistance at locations other than one-two-seven-one-four Chestnut Street. The only employee on site is the owner and occupant of the home. No clients or other employees will be on premises, and that the business will comply at all times with the conditions and requirements set forth in the Town Code, Section nine-nineteen C-one, A through J.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the planning commission.
Second.
Any discussion? Holloway, aye.
Ephros, aye.
Melan, aye.
McDonald, aye.
Oh, aye.
Line, aye.
Um, next, and by the way, I noticed we missed an item on the agenda. So we'll go through it as soon as we finish the planning commission. It's item three, council selection of vice mayor. It's, it's an irregular item that, uh, comes up once every two years, so apologies for missing it. We'll pick it up after planning commission. Kathy?
The planning commission reviewed a request for a final use permit from the Harringtons for construction of both a ten-by-ten-foot shed at one-two-seven-five-two Chapel Street, and the construction of a twenty-four-by-twenty-eight-foot garage, and the adjacent side lot number forty-two, which construction has been completed. It's been demonstrated with respect to the shed that the necessary requirements have been met, and the planning commission recommends the town council approve the final use permit for the shed. With request to the garage on adjacent lot forty-two, the applicant's met the requirements uh, imposed by the A R B, and has obtained the necessary county permits and inspection. The preliminary use permit stated that both structures were to be used only for storage and garage use purposes. During the construction of the garage, rough-in plumbing was installed in the garage to the dwelling located at one-two-seven-five-two Chapel, and a permit from Fairfax County was obtained, listed in the Fairfax inspections database online, which shows that the permit was issued for installed plumbing rough-in for detached garage. The planning commission understands the auxiliary building sewer was connected to the sewer of the main building. This issue in its relation to the county sewer policy for the town was discussed during the planning commission at the September twenty-seventeen Town Council meeting, and the applicant indicated they would file for a lot consolidation. The application for consolidation of the lot at one-two-seven-five-two Chapel Street and the adjacent lot forty-two with the garage was filed, notices given, and the application for law consolidation was approved by the planning commission at its meeting on October twenty-four, twenty-seventeen, and duly reported to the town council at its November twenty-seventeen meeting. Since land records are kept by Fairfax County, it was necessary to record the deed and plat showing the law consolidation with the county as required by Clifton Code ten-dash-fifty-eight C. Various email conversations ensued between the town clerk and Ms. Harrington with respect to how to file with the county, and the town provided necessary signed paperwork, including a letter. For various reasons, the deed and plat indicating the law consolidation were not recorded with the county. At the planning commission meeting, Ms. Harrington indicated the applicant to not believe it was necessary to consolidate merely because of the plumbing rough-in in the garage, since no fixture units were installed. Uh, the planning commission noted at the meeting that the sewer policy for the town of Clifton, which had been approved by the county, stated in paragraph three that if all other requirements of law are met, including but not limited to the Fairfax County Code, Building Code, Plumbing Code, and Clifton zoning ordinance, auxiliary buildings on lots with an existing sewer connection may be connected to the main building sewer lateral and approved administratively if both the main and auxiliary buildings plumbing fixture unit count does not exceed thirty fixture units, and both the auxiliary and main buildings are on the same lot. Paragraph four of the policy states, "All other requests for sewer service must be reviewed by the town council of the town of Clifton and approved by the board of supervisors." Since lot forty-two is not a lot which is approved for sewer on the list, the lots attached to the policy, presumably if sewer is connected in the building on that lot, it needs to either be independently approved for sewer under the policy or be an auxiliary building on the same lot as the main building to which it's connected. Since this issue involves the county sewer policy for Clifton, and any interpretation by the town and the county obviously also impacts other empty lots in town on which auxiliary buildings could be constructed, and then sewer could be connected to a main building, the planning commission determined that the decision on the foregoing, namely, does the lot consolidation need to be completed, or does other action need to be taken, would need to involve both the town council and the county in order to make sure that we have a consistent and clear method for proceeding in the future, as well as in the instant case.
Okay, discussion. We sent the sewer policy out to, um, all the council members, and I think it's on the town website. If it's not, it'll get up on the town website. Uh, short background, the, it's hard to do a short background on this, but we'll do as short as we can, which is originally there was supposed to be a sewage treatment plant in the Eight Acre Park, and there was going to be a gravity-fed sewer system that went from existing buildings in the nineteen-sixties into that system. The county elected to protect the watershed, not to build a sewage treatment plant that would treat sewage and then dump it out into, uh, Hope's Head Creek. Um, they elected not to build that, but because they had this gravity-fed system going in from existing structures, it goes to a big sister, and a couple times a day, trucks go down Chapel Street and empty that thing out, take it all the way up to Braddock Road and dump it in the county sewer system there. So it's a limited, um, capacity facility. So the county put a policy in place that basically said, if you have a structure at this time that's connected to the sewer, good for you. If you have an existing structure that is on, um, uh, out, an outhouse, and there were a number of those, you could connect to the sewer, and they have a list of ten specific, um, existing structures that could connect, and no new structures could connect to the sewer system, period. Uh, and that was to protect the pump and hall, protect the watershed, et cetera. Over time, the county developed an approach that said they'll allow people to build auxiliary buildings on the same lot and connect that into the sewer system with two conditions. Number one, both the main building that's on the sewer and the auxiliary building must be on the existing lot that's connected to the sewer. And number two, so you wouldn't build ten of these facilities, the total fixtures, uh, among all these various things that you build, may not exceed thirty fixture units. By the way, I'll note that the county said they think that thirty is way too high, but because we've got this effectively grandfathered agreement, they'll allow us to go up to thirty, which I think is good. If we pushed harder, they're talking about taking it down to twenty-two, which I think would be a, a significant problem for people. So the county reformed this agreement in nineteen ninety-one and expressly put this provision in about auxiliary buildings, it's black and white. And it says you can build an auxiliary building on a lot, provided no more than thirty fixture units, and both the auxiliary and main buildings are on the same lot. Anything else literally has to go, the applicant would have to go to the board of supervisors, as well as the town council, to get it approved on a one-off basis. Um, this agreement was entered into between the town of Clifton and the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. So what we call it a policy, it's a legally binding agreement. We don't have the ability to look the other way um, because we've made this agreement with the county. Why does it matter? It matters because there are ten dozen, maybe more, lots in town with no structures on them. And if you could simply connect a new structure into the sewer system, it would overload the pump and hall. So it's a big issue for the county, and it should be a big issue for us as well. The requirement being, if you have a lot in town with no structure on it, and you want to build, and you want to put water on it, what you do is, you put a septic field in, like people up on, uh, Clifton Heights, Frog Hill, Red Bird Ridge, et cetera. That's why they are the way they are. So that's the background on the sewer policy. Um, in, in this particular instance, the planning commission was presented with a garage with no plumbing or anything else in it. Um, planning commission recommended approval of that, and then that came to the town council, which approved that. That went into the county that issued permits for it. Sometime in between the town and the county, plumbing was added and a connection to the sewer was added. It was noticed by a member of the planning commission who saw the trenching going in and the sewer connection being connected, which drew the question of, wait, 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 you can't do that under this policy. The, uh, property owner, uh, said they understood and that it needed to be consolidated, applied for a lot consolidation. The lot consolidation was approved. That requires a plat and a deed, and then recordation, and somewhere in between approval and development of the plat and recordation with the county, uh, the property owners started to ask questions. Is this really, is this policy real? Uh does it really matter? Does it apply here? That sort of thing, so. Um both the Clifton town attorney and the county have both looked at this and have both determined that. Um this is a clear violation of the agreement between the town and the county. And that in order to connect the sewer to this new garage on this lot forty two. The lots must be consolidated in order to make the connection and the pipe is connected in the agreement. Both the town attorney and the county have said when you connect the sewer pipe in and it comes into the building, that's considered a connection whether you then. Hook a sink up to that disposal or not. Um so that's the issue uh before us and the planning commission came. And said, you know, the property owners asked, is the policy a real thing or can you just look the other way and? Uh does it really apply here? So appropriately, fair question. Get the word out to uh the the council and ask the appropriate people. Uh i- is this a real policy? Does it matter? And is this a violation? And the answer is yes, it's real. Yes, it has far reaching consequences, we could have a dozen new houses built in town. That shouldn't be built under the policy and connected to the sewer. And that the what's been done here violates the policy. So the question then is, oh and I'll note that the town attorney is actually on the meeting now. And has been looking at this. And to the extent we have factual questions, I'm sure the town attorney can address those as far as. Uh legal advice to the council that would be done separately outside of a public meeting as to how we proceed. On litigation and enforcement. Um the county has alerted everyone a- across the county about this issue inspectors a- and everything else. County's looking at proceeding with enforcement on this. And I believe the town should proceed uh and look at enforcement as well. Uh possibly issuing a notice of violation. In order to address this, in order to correct it. One of two things would be required, one would be digging up the connection and removing it, so there's no longer connection. Number two would be finishing the deed and recording the plat indeed that the town uh council has already approved. And I believe the plat's already done, so that if those were recorded. The lot consolidation would be complete, the issue would go away, but until the issue goes away. Um we have an outstanding violation and we can't look the other way because it's a county agreement. And if we were to look the other way, we'd set a precedent that would be devastating for. The town, but more importantly would overload the pump and hall system. So that's the background, um questions, thoughts, discussion, council members. A- and to be clear, the planning commission said, we're not entirely sure, it's complicated. Town council, please step in and because this is a uh an agreement, a legally binding agreement. Between the town council and the county board of supervisors, we have to. And that's why it's in our hands to ask us, what would we like to do with this? Questions, thoughts, discussion?
I I don't see that this is terribly difficult, um. I think the homeowner should be notified by the council. That they have one of two options based on the legal uh investigation that has been done. Uh and that probably the easiest thing to do. Is to complete the process that they already started and got the town council to approve. And that the town council is more than willing to continue to approve that, uh but it has to be finished. And it's up to them to finish that process, which is to finish the consolidation uh by recordation. Uh and if they don't, then we have to look at enforcement, uh which we don't want to do and I assume they don't want to do.
Mona has a hand up, I would recommend we listen to her before we take any more comments from the council.
Where is she?
Okay, can um Mona be uh allowed to speak? And Mona's the property owner that we're talking about, so people know why we're um having Mona speak.
Good evening, I just have a couple of things, um I think for. Transparency, my first question is, is are you planning to share the legal opinion? That states that even though I have rough in. In the garage that that constitutes a connection to the sewer. There is clearly no fixture in there. Therefore, it is impossible for anything to be running in the sewer. When you go to the county and you request a permit for any. Thing on the application which you could pull up on the Fairfax County website. It asks you what you're trying to get your permit for. One of the options is rough in and then there are several other options for a toilet or a fixture or anything else that would lend itself. To connect to the sewer, where are we getting the? I I'm interested in some transparency from the commi- from from the town council on. How you're making a legal determination that the language in the pol- sewer policy constitutes. A violation when the garage is not finished and in order for me to finish the garage and add something that is physically connected to the sewer. I would be required to go before the planning commission, hence the town council. Approval and go back to the county and file for request for a permit. Of which then I could build something that is connected to the sewer in the inside of my garage. Which would require a lot consolidation. So I'm not incredibly under, uh it's not clear because there's no transparency on this. Um where the legal citations are and how the town council has determined. That having rough in in the garage constitutes a violation. Because I'm connected to the sewer, because we may overwhelm the sewer, even though there's nothing in there, there's no sink, there's no toilet. Um that there's nothing in there, so I'm interested in how we've come to this legal determination. I I'm interested in what this looks like procedurally. There there are implications of passing precedent this quickly on something on a matter like this. It it doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like an impractical thing to build garage like I built on this lot. And have the option of rough in 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 the case that in the future. Someone decides they want to go through the town regulation and then the county. To take it a step further, we've not made that decision, our garage is open for any of you to look at, there are no fixtures in there, we have no plans for that. Should we decide to do that, we'll go through the protocol and install that. So given that the majority of the cases in the town going before the town council. Um in following the sewer policy are. A you, this is a unique situation, we we don't have anything in there connected to the sewer, but I'm about to be found in violation. For connecting to the sewer and required to consolidate my lot as a result. There are separate applications and separate processes for the various inspections required by the county. To receive permitting when you are connected to a sewer, I fully understand that. And Mayor Holloway, I take great, great offense to, is this a real policy, does it matter? Look the other way, so I'm incredibly offended by that, but. I just wanted to point that out, I don't think that's fair and I don't think taking words from wherever you've heard them and announcing them on this public meeting. Uh and characterizing my words in that way.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, uh one question from the planning commission, if the property owner was to add fixtures. Uh add a toilet, add a sink inside the garage, uh what? Planning commission approval and what town approval would be included in that, what review and approval?
There wouldn't actually be any review or approval if you're adding just something inside your house. If you're doing something that requires some sort of county permit. Uh building permit inside the house or plumbing inspection or anything else electrical, you would need to go to the county. But there's no um planning commission requirements in the zoning code. And there's nothing else in the code, in fact, we had a, we had a recent case where uh one of the folks on. Actually on Chapel Street two wanted to put a new bathroom in downstairs and specifically asked. Did they need to come to the town to get approval? And we responded that they weren't expanding the footprint of their house, no, they did not, but if it's a new bathroom, they might have to go to the county.
So you're saying if I was building a bathroom in my garage, an apartment, a studio, I am fixing it up to be. A livable space, you are saying that I completely bypass the town and I go straight to the county, is that accurate information?
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing in the zoning code that says. You would need to apply for a use permit, I mean, if you were going to do a new dwelling. You were going to have somebody live in there, I mean, I'd have to take a closer look at that. But for example, if you were putting a bathroom in your house, which I think you did, you know, I I know other people have done it. You don't come to the town for the bathroom in the house. Or even for the bathroom in the garage unless it's part of all building the garage. In which case, you know, we normally ask, what is the garage being used for, dwelling, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, we've had one or two cases. Actually, and one I can think of on the McNamara's old property where they were building. That garage space and they were going to be using it as a dwelling and that one got approved, obviously. Because it was a new building, we intended to use it as a dwelling. And that one went through the town and and zoning processes. But you know, if we, if you put up a building, for example, as a garage and for storage. And then you later decided to add a bathroom in, there's actually nothing in the statute that requires you to come back to the town.
That 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 is a very strange. I I'm not sure I understand that, uh that it's a different use permit than what I requested. I requested to have a garage for storage, which is what I'm using it for, so if you're telling me right now. That my use changes and I don't need to go back through the town, we've got some major issues.
Well, Mona, if your use changes and you're using.
That's what we're talking about, that's about building a bathroom and adding all these fixtures. Changes, it's no longer storage, so that would be something that constitutes a violation. Within the regulations of the initial use permit I requested, I would have to go back to the town and say. Hey, town, I've changed my mind, I want to build an apartment in my garage and I want to have a bathroom. And fixtures and whatever else I want to have in there, I'm requesting a change in my use permit.
You would do that and if you, you would need to come back to the town if you were doing it as a dwelling. But if you're using a garage for storage. And you happen to want a bathroom in it, you're not changing the use, it's primarily for s- storage and parking your car. But it just happens to have a bathroom in it for whatever reason, convenience. Uh whatever reason, but not to be used as a dwelling, you would have an equally valid argument that you were not changing the use. It's for storage and a garage, it just happens to have a bathroom in it.
I I I think we have, um and I just want to point this out as a general comment and I'm not trying to be defensive, but I do think that the town has a. Overwhelming issue of disseminating contradictory information on any given, at any given time of what. Is required and not required, um I personally went through an incredibly arduous. Unnecessary, difficult process with the county in obtaining my permits for my garage. Um one of the biggest issues was that the memorandum of understanding between the county and the mayor was signed by. Tom Peterson, we didn't even have something updated that would effectuate or allow the county to even. I mean, we we've got some bigger issues and I apologize that I'm asking these questions, um. But, you know, I'm not using the sewer and I don't have plans to use the sewer and. Whether Kathy's understanding of this today, at least. Is being communicated as you wouldn't have to go through the town, I I don't think that's correct, I think. Have to go through the town because my intent on that use permit would have changed. And the right thing to do would say, yeah, I that was my use per, otherwise that's a loophole and that doesn't make any sense. But maybe that's how regulations are governed in this town and I just need to get used to the contradictory information. That said, even if the town is not involved in the process and dotting i's and crossing t's as appropriate. I still would go to the county and request a permit of which then. In theory, based on the discussions we've had today, they would look at the sewer policy and they would say in order to do this, you need to. Consolidate your lots.
Excuse me, but uh what you just said seems to result in the same, have the same end result. I mean, w- we can argue about, I I'm relatively sure Kathy is correct in the way she has interpreted this. I don't have to even have a bathroom in a storage area, I could just have a sink. In a storage area, which makes all sorts of sense in the world and. But you just said you'd have to consolidate the lot anyway, so.
I'm saying.
That's the case, why is there a big issue here?
I'm saying, should I install a fixture that is connected to the sewer of?
We have no way of knowing that.
S- so what is, wh- what are you saying, like you have to everybody?
I'm saying.
What are the implications?
I'm saying that when you, if if I understand what Bill was saying and what Kathy is saying. That you filed an application, it had been approved by the town. And part of the approval was that you consolidated the lots and you took that approval. And now you're saying you don't want to consolidate.
I got the approval and the permit. Before this came up with the town council. So that's not true, Vice Mayor Fros, that information is inaccurate that you're saying right now, so it'd probably be good to look at the facts. Of what happened here, that.
Just repeated what had been said.
It was, it's not accurate, I got my permitting and I went through my process and and that happened later, all on. I mean, I don't, you guys are going to sit here on this meeting for a while, you have other things on the agenda. What I'm asking for is. I've had this garage for a couple of years, we're just now addressing the final use permit, red flag. Why, why can't I get a final use permit for this garage? Given everything else complies and in the event that I plan to do anything that connects to the sewer. I would be required to go through, according to Kathy, not through the town, but through the county and I would have to apply for the proper permitting. To connect anything to the sewer, but for now, nothing's connected to the sewer and there's assumption, an assumption. That the legal finding here is that I'm connected to the sewer, therefore I need to consolidate lots. And I'm not connected to the sewer, so it's a technicality in the regulation. I'm not connected to the sewer because there's nothing going on. So all I'm asking you to consider is, are you setting a precedent that if somebody has rough in? Which is a pretty typical thing to do, because you really can't do it ten years later if you decide you want to do it. It's very tricky and expensive, the that automatically constitutes a consolidation? I mean, is that what, and if that's the case, it would be good to have some transparency with what. The lawyer from town, what his legal opinion is in this matter, as well as what the county's saying, so I can review that, I think that would be fair.
Okay, uh Steve a- and everyone just see have the facts right. The application was for just a garage, no plumbing. And that was approved by the planning commission, approved by the town council, it was only later that it was discovered. That in fact, the plumbing was going in when someone actually saw the trench going in with the piping. At that point, the planning commission raised the issue and said, wait a sec, this is not what we reviewed, not what we approved. And this triggers the sewer policy and requires a lot consolidation. Um and the applicant then, or the the property owner then applied for a lot consolidation. As a result of that, which was approved, so uh the sequence of events.
I did not apply. I did not apply for a lot consolidation. I was refinancing my house. And I contacted Kathy numerous times saying, I need this information so that I can move forward with the process. I finally got a letter from Kathy, went to the county with it to begin the process. And the county told me that I have to follow a completely different process and the town has nothing to do with this. Which is the same thing I ran into when I was building my garage and getting permits. Because the relationship with the town, for who knows why, is not a great relationship with the county. And the residents of the town suffer as a result of that. So I was bounced back and forth numerous times. And Kathy, to correct your earlier statement that I've received numerous emails on the process from Amanda is not true. One email asking if I'd attend the meeting and a link to the sewer policy. So I think we got to get our facts straight. So we're not painting this a certain way. I did try to, in good faith, consolidate the lots because wa, it wasn't a big deal. But now that this has been so screwed up and it's three years later, I am challenging if I really need to do that. And if we have loosey goosey rules and are we really governing properly? And are we consistent with our town residents? And are we transparent as to why we do what we do? I do have major concerns.
All right. Um, and I'll ask Amanda. Mona said that Amanda, you've only sent one email to her and, and she wants to make sure you have your facts straight on that. I'd like you to check and confirm whether you've sent only one email to her or more than one. Um, I just want to know because we've been challenged on facts. Um, and as far as consistent treatment, I think that's the biggest problem we have here. Is the sewer policy applies across the town. If this was the only lot in the town that this could be an issue for, again, perhaps we could come up with some one-off answer, but unfortunately it's not. The, the one fact question I've heard is, I'm not connected to the sewer. Does a rough in trigger a connection? And I'm not using it. Is that a connection? So valid questions, those questions were actually asked and have been answered by the town attorney, but also by the county as well. So look for the county. We will look for the county to get back on that, perhaps directly to the property owner on that question of whether connecting a sewer pipe in, but not putting the fixtures on it constitutes a connection to the sewer system. I, I understand that the answer from them is unequivocally yes. But we'll go back to them again on that. And I believe the county may be taking enforcement action directly against the property owner as well on this. And that's on the county's determination. As far as legal memos written to the council by our lawyer, no, we don't make those public. But the conclusions of those, uh, we, we could. And we, we have verbally, or we could look at having something written up on that specific question that would be appropriate to make public.
Mayor Holloway, I just want to point out that I received my permit for my rough in from the county.
Yep, I know.
Just to be clear, it's not a document. I received that from the county. So it's hard to understand how the county gave me that permit and inspected that rough in.
Okay.
Logically, my mindset is, is this doesn't constitute a violation because I got my permit from the county, the same people who are going to enforce this and send me a violation. They gave me the permit. They inspected it. They know it's on two different lots. Does that raise any red flags for anybody? I got that from the county. So is that a mistake on the county's part?
In my opinion, yes, it's a mistake, but that's up to the county. If the county determines that they believe it's a violation of the sewer policy and wishes to follow enforcement action, that'll be the county's determination. Okay, um, so our attorneys looked at it. Um, the county's attorney's office is involved. The county's Department of Public Works is involved as well. Uh, I understand they'll be taking action. Um, Vice Mayor Efros, he would propose the course of action. I, I took perhaps from what you said, that a letter would be written to provide some period of time, 30 days, whatever, before a formal notice of violation, perhaps with fines would be issued as well. Um, but ask you that, Steve?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just trying to get everybody to get things done. Um, it may not have been the cleanest process. It may have been confusions with the county, whatever it is. Uh, it, it's not terribly relevant to me. We've got a situation now. It seems to me the easiest thing for the applicant to do is finish the process that they acknowledged they already started and finish the consolidation. Uh, rather than make a major legal issue out of this. Um, but if they don't want to do that, then we'll have a legal issue. But I think we ought to tell, tell them for 30 days that it is our understanding that this policy is enforceable, that it does uh, consider a rough in to be a connection. Uh, it is our understanding that the county also believes, wh- whatever Maureen wrote to you in, in the, in the legal uh, analysis. Uh, and that the easiest thing for everybody to do is simply complete the consolidation that was already started. If they don't, then they are in violation of the town and we will proceed with enforcement.
I would just add, is there, is there a downside to that? I mean, what, what is the impact of consolidating? I could see if that lot were otherwise buildable for a residence. That consolidating that would remove a, a future opportunity to build a standalone dwelling on it would certainly be an impact. But if it's, if it's not buildable for a residence, what's, what's the downside of consolidating at this point? Could you help us understand that? I don't know if Mona's still on. Or maybe Kathy, you've already discussed that. If there's a high cost to it, uh, it sounds like a lot of the work is already done. And it's just, it's, it's just annoying at this point. I get that.
Yeah, it's fair. Obviously very annoying because an effort was made back in, in 2017. It was then dropped. And, uh, you know, just because the county didn't understand how this needed to work with the town. Um, and, and how Mona or anyone else was doing it, I don't know. I know the Newnans didn't have any problem filing with the county their new plat and deed for the boundary line adjustment that happened right about the same time or maybe a little bit later. So I'm not sure really what happened. It's, everything's been done, but filing the, the actual deed and the, and the plat with the county. The plat's been created because they have to be done for the planning commission approval and review. Um, authorization by the town by virtue of a letter has already been given. It, you're right. It's annoying. Um.
I'm just saying that I, I understand that Mona is annoyed in this process. So.
Clearly. And, and I will, I will just say unless the sewer policy changes, the lot is not a buildable lot for a residence since it cannot be.
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding. So I think it eliminates that, uh, you know, that potential downside. Just, just a question that I had in my mind was, uh, I know that, that this hinges directly on sewer connection, but was the water supply roughed in at the same time or does that remain to be done?
I have no idea. Um, in all of our discussions, uh, Mona sent a photo of what was done, which I forwarded, uh, onto the council. Um, my understanding, it was just the rough in and it's the sewer connection. So whether there are separate water pipes there, I have no idea.
It would certainly be reasonable that the water pipes would have been put in and capped off, but we don't know.
Yeah, the permit just says rough plumbing generically, doesn't necessarily refer to sewer water. It's just plumbing rough in. Uh, was for the permit.
Okay. The other thing I would add is I, you know, this, this, uh, I think the subtlety of a rough in is, is new. But checking for, uh, connections across lot lines is not new. In fact, I think Patrick with your uh, garage that you put up, there was a confirmation at that point that the lots were actually already consolidated and there was a check in that.
Yeah.
To make sure that everything was good to go.
Yeah. And to, and you know, I, I just went through this. So I just built a detached garage. Um, a prop, well, almost across the lot line, but close enough to be within the setbacks. Um, it has a bathroom. Um, but I, I dealt directly with the county. They really don't understand the sewer policy. If I didn't know in depth about it, they wouldn't have caught it at all. Um, I'd actually tell them about it. So the county really needs to step up to be a consistent message to the citizens. Cause I'm sure citizens ask us about the sewer policy and we have a certain way of describing it. When you get to the county, they pretty much tell you there, there is no requirement for that. Maybe that'll change due to this incident, but I, I have educated almost everybody at the county on how this all works together. Because you, you're dealing with people at the counter that may switch positions every two months. So it is confusing.
But you went through it. You were able to get it done, but you found the county wasn't really necessarily completely on the ball. I don't think it comes up that much.
Yeah.
Um, and some education was required, but you were able to get it done?
Yeah, no, I got, I got the permit. I had to take out fixtures in my house because at some point you have to count all the fixtures in your house, um, to be within the 30 fixture units. Um, so, but, but I had to do that. The county never checked it. They never verified my fixture count. Um, they just believed that I was going to keep within it. So I, I think we need some, we need to work with the county to get this, this policy kind of established with them.
And Pat, would you be able to, if the property owner at all wanted to ask questions about how it works, since you've actually been through the process yourself, would you be willing to share what you've learned and what you went through if it was helpful to them?
Oh, absolutely. Be happy to help.
Okay. Cause that's, that's what we want, uh, is just to get it done. So. Okay, um. Steve has proposed, uh, sending a, a letter out, but not a violation, just a letter as to what's going on 30 days and, and then, uh, we, we move on from that, but to provide some time. Uh, and Steve, is that a motion?
Yes, that would be a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, further discussion about that? And it would be 30 days in my mind, 30 days from the time the letter goes out. So if it takes Amanda a week to write the letter and have me or Steve review it or whatever, then that's another week. Okay. So it's not 30 days from this moment. It's 30 days from the letter. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Um, we'll do roll call Holloway. I?
Efros, I.
Mel, I.
Donald, I.
Poe, I.
Fly, I.
Okay.
One more thing though. It may be a minor thing, but if we can get town council action on the shed for which thing has been approved and we know that's all done hopefully and taken care of.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Um, we'll make a motion to, um, approve the recommendation of the planning commission to issue a final use permit for the 10 by 10 foot shed on lot 41A.
Second.
Holloway, I?
Efros, I.
Mel, I.
Donald.
Poe, I.
Fly, I.
Okay. Um, Kathy, anything else?
No, that's it for the planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and we had skipped over, um, council selection of vice mayor. Um, so background on vice mayor. A- as a technical matter under the charter, the vice mayor is not a voted position um, by the people. It's appointed by the council. Historically, the practice has been to select the vice mayor as whichever council member got the highest number of votes in, in the election. Um, and I believe that's Reagan. Correct me if I'm wrong. And in addition, for the last, uh, two years, Steve Efros has served as vice mayor and done a tremendous job in doing that. So that's the background. We're not bound to do anything in particular, but we certainly should have a vice mayor. And it's selected by the, the council. Discussion thoughts?
What are the rules, their rights and responsibilities and powers granted to the vice mayor?
And I think it's actually in the charter of all things, but in essence, if the mayor is indisposed, uh, and this funny, if the mayor, it doesn't seem that funny, but if the mayor is indisposed, the vice mayor runs the meeting. So, you know, if I'm in Hawaii or something and can't do it, vice mayor runs the meeting. Um, and otherwise, if the mayor for some reason moves to Iowa, um, the council chooses the new mayor. It's not the vice mayor becomes the mayor. So it's really more a, a matter of running meetings when the mayor is not able to do so.
I would be honored to serve as your vice mayor if the council wants to stick with tradition.
Okay. Thoughts, discussion? All right, I, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, for the council to appoint Reagan McDonald as vice mayor for the, uh, 2020, 22 term.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Holloway, I?
Efros, I.
Mel, I.
Poe, I.
Fly, I.
And I will abstain, McDonald.
All right. Well, all hail the, uh, new vice mayor. Very exciting. Hope you're ready for all the difficult challenges that it entails.
Just remember the pledge of allegiance because that's about all you get to do.
You don't get to, you don't even sit around and wait for the mayor to die.
Yeah, that's gonna be a long time. I'm eating healthy. Report of the zoning administrator. Amanda, I, I guess give us an update. I mean, we're not going to talk about stuff we've already talked about at great length.
Right. Just a quick update. Um, at the last council meeting, uh, I was asked to send out sort of a final letter to the, um, property owner of 7184 Clifton Road. Um, reiterating the, um, the issues that need to be resolved to bring the property and the construction into compliance. And to, to give him 30 days to do so. Either by removing, that is fixing the violations or applying for, um, a review and approval by the ARB and the planning commission. And the deadline has not passed yet. Uh, the deadline is August 9th. So that obviously happens before the next meeting. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you wanted to decide anything. Um, if nothing is received by then, that's five days away.
It seems premature to decide anything. We haven't heard back. Um, but you, you've heard nothing thus far?
Nothing.
Okay. I, I think, um, just my thought is it, we probably won't hear anything. I've heard there are some difficulties there with the property, with the property owner. Maybe financial issues. I've heard this. Okay. I'm not a firsthand witness of any of this. But at the end of the day, what we have is a property that was built, uh, a, a property where the applicant presented something to, uh, ARB that was reviewed. The applicant presented something to uh ARB that was reviewed and approved and the. Planning commission and the town council also approved. And then they built something else. And it's sort of like what was approved, but it's around the edges where there's a lot of things that don't work and. Maybe they're unaware, but stuff like plastic railings are just not things that are approved. In the town of Clifton, and I know that it's a burden to be in the town of Clifton because you have to comply with. Ordinances and um architectural criteria, but that's just part of living here and. Upside is, as people know, a tremendous delta in property value versus the exact same home just dropped. Someplace else in the county. So it's definitely an upside and everybody's got to be treated. Um, consistently in the same way under these policies. So. This is a difficult situation because it it was built and a lot of it was built. Uh differently from what was approved and in a way that probably is simply not acceptable. And I think the county has a number of issues that I understand about retaining walls and other things that are actually dangerous. So I believe this is going to require uh concerted action by the county and the town. Involving the county attorney's office, involving our attorney as well to ultimately get this resolved possibly. Fines leans against the property and everything else. So it might be a. A little difficult before we get resolution of it, but uh it's the same thing. If you allow plastic railings there, you allow plastic railings everywhere. So you have to be careful about. What we do. It's it's unfortunate when we're in this position, but unfortunately as a council. We're given the responsibility to have to do this stuff to protect the uh greater community. And I expect that what's going to happen, I hope. It isn't what's going to happen, and we have until August ninth for them to come back. And the proposal was come back with whatever it is you actually did that's different, back to the ARB and we'll sort it out. Maybe some of it's okay. Some of it's probably not, but we'll know what the list is. If they don't come back with anything, it's an obvious per se violation to build something that is not what was approved. And we'll have to go down the enforcement route, which we've done a number of times in the last couple of years. With other properties, we'll have to do it again. Unfortunate, but uh probably what we'll have to do. But because this is a weighty matter, we're not there now. And I don't think tonight we should be saying if this, then this, whatever, let's wait. Give it time, see what we hear. But at the next meeting, be prepared for fairly aggressive uh legal enforcement action. Against the property and I sure hope we don't need to. So questions, thoughts?
Yeah, I I have a question. Um, I assume Amanda that you sent that by certified mail and that we have a receipt that he received it.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Good question, good process. I appreciate Amanda that you're doing everything by the books cuz we have to be able to document all this when we get to court. Um, on these issues, if heaven forbid, we have to go to court, but if we do, we're ready to do it. Other zoning administrator reports, not needed, but yes.
Well, um, this this week I am sending out three notices to property owners. Reminding them that it is time for them to come back to the planning commission. With their documentation in order to proceed with their final use permits. I I unless Kathy corrects me, I think that it's two years. You have two years from the issuance of a preliminary use permit for construction. To to finish your project. And then at the end of two years, you need to come back to the planning commission. And uh provide just the documentation showing that you have gotten all of your permits from the county and you passed all of your inspections. And that whatever you built was uh in compliance with what the ARB approved.
Is there a process for citizens to extend that? Beyond two years?
Uh.
Or they have to reapply for a new permit?
The the preliminary use permit, again Kathy knows more about this than I do. But my understanding is that the preliminary use permits do expire after two years.
No, you you can come in and ask for an extension. We just would need to hear from you because. What sometimes happens, especially if it's it, uh, the construction involves land disturbing activity. Is it's possible zoning ordinances have changed in those two years and plans etc. may have to be modified. Hence hence that limit.
So do you have to attend a meeting or is an email sufficient or?
No, you probably you need the the requirement in the code is applicants need to be present at all meetings at the planning commission and town council. Or their agent does, for example, if you have an architect or engineer or someone acting for you, or it could be anyone. Um, who knows the facts and can answer, they can represent you.
Got it.
Uh, as far as an update on commercial use permits, I don't have anything to report.
All right, one one thing I want to loop back on planning commission is. We have been working with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, who issued us some notices of violation to the town on uh two things. One, the DEQ said that our. Uh, code, our ordinance did not say that certain notes had to be included on plats. The requirements in the ordinance, but the ordinance didn't say you must do X. And you also must write a note to yourself that you must do X on your plat. Uh, a- and so they issued us notices of violation for that. And they also said that we needed to implement a town septic tank pump out requirement. Uh, by the town of Clifton and pump out septic tanks and tell people to turn their fields and. We told them the county does that, not us. And you know, they said prove it, so we did. And um they've asked us to get information about the status of septic tank pump outs in town. And notices that go out. So. Um, we'll be entering into a corrective action agreement that says we will in fact revise our ordinance to require these notes. On plats. And uh we'll send them information from the county on septic tank pump outs. Um, that agreement's not completed yet, but when it is complete. Uh, we'll send it out to the council so everybody can review it and probably at next month's meeting. Will then uh ask the council to bless that agreement. So just a heads up on that. I don't know if anyone has any quick questions on that matter. Okay. Um, architecture review board, is there a report?
Uh, Royce uh provided a note, the the ARB did not meet this month.
Okay.
But but uh there was a a uh. Observation that the uh the chair received. About uh signs popping up in town and inquiry whether uh they were allowed or permitted. So I I think Royce's note indicated that the closest thing that they. Resembled was a political sign, which is covered in the uh the ordinance in terms of. Being uh in place before an election and when they have to come down after an election. But uh but beyond that, that was the closest link. That they are, I think folks may have seen them. It's um they're they're kind of multicolored signs that are hanging on fences and in in various yards. Uh, that's that's what it was in reference to.
It starts with we believe and has a bunch of other stuff on it. That's what his letter was specifically about. I guess we've gotten complaints. Uh, and questions about that, but obviously those are not the only signs people put up in their in their yard. Um, so the ARB asked us what we wanted to do about this. And I looked at the sign ordinance in great detail. Of course, ARB is the. The drafter, the architect of the sign ordinance, but. It's probably the case that these signs are not permitted. Under the ordinance, as Reagan said, there is something called a political sign that you can put up. You can have. No more than uh two per property and they can't be bigger than eight square feet. Um, they shouldn't be attached to buildings. So kind of what we're talking about here. I think the concern is it it cannot be erected any more than sixty days prior to the election. It must be removed within seven days after the election. These are um not really connected to an election. So uh they would probably be out of town, out of time in that regard, even if they qualify as political signs. Which don't require um ARB approval, all other signs do, but not political signs. And and a couple of other exceptions. So I thought about it and my thinking is if these are not permitted. By the way, I want to quickly say I also see signs, uh proud parent, Virginia Tech grad twenty twenty. Um, Robinson Rams mulch sale. Uh, proud parent, um Fairfax High School, whatever. You see these signs all the time. And what's written on the sign is not the driver for me. They're all the same thing. People put these, uh what I think of is personal message signs in their yard. And if you want to drill down on the code, they probably don't uh comply and we could probably take. Um, enforcement action against those little signs. So we could do one of two things. One, say, uh, we've looked at it. And we're not there yet, but we've looked at it and determined they don't comply. They must come down and we're taking action against. Everybody, Virginia Tech parents, uh people selling mulch, whatever. Um, or we would say they are permissible. And we put something in the code that says on what basis they actually are permissible. Can you have a hundred? Okay, so for example, you could have residential district only. Um, no more than one per yard facing the street. Uh, no greater than, I don't know, call it four square feet, what, you know, big enough to accommodate. They're all the same, these signs. Um, and up no longer than sixty days and can't be put in again after it's taken down. So you don't pick it up and stick it back in and go, oh, it's a new sixty days, making it a permanent sign. Because these simply would not be approvable as permanent signs. That's very clear, I think. And in fact, uh, one one example.
Just a quick question, is that i- is that due to the materials that they're constructed out of?
Yes, and and more.
Okay.
Restanding signs are limited to one per yard. So if somebody has a historical marker, they're not putting these up. Okay, so you got that. You also got they're not made out of wood or whatever. Yes, so thanks, Daryl. There are a lot of reasons why. This isn't the kind of thing we'd see as a permanent sign. So we could put in place. Um, requirements that would say, yes, you can do this. And here's the um. Requirements under which you can do it, the timeline, the size, the number. Oh, and and it, I think we'd say it can't be advertising for any for profit entity. So you want to do uh mulch sale.
Play.
Yeah, school play, that's cool. But if you want to advertise for uh Walmart or something, no, you can't do that. And we we put that in. And that to me would be a way to put right in the ordinance. So everybody knows exactly what's okay. And that might mean every place. Every property has one of these in there and they're saying, I don't know, I love Donald Trump, I love Joe Biden. Um, I love the NBA, I whatever, but we wouldn't regulate the content. And we just regulate the how many and and how large and how long. And then there wouldn't be any questionable whether it's okay or not. So that was my my thought. And that what we do is kick it back to the ARB to say, look, you're the people who come up with the sign ordinance. How do you propose to put this together along lines like that? That's if we want to go down path B, which is yes, it's okay, and it's okay within these parameters. Versus we hereby declare it's not okay. Um, normally for me, I see Virginia Tech grad twenty twenty. I don't care. I'm not knocking on the door. I'm not. Calling the council, I'm not writing an angry letter or anything like that. However. If people have brought it to our attention and it's been expressly brought to our attention by the chairman of the ARB. Then we actually need to do something, something with it. So thoughts?
I mean.
Oh, go ahead, Moon.
I I think that, you know, it would be a shame if you couldn't advertise, you know, your child's graduating from high school or college. And I hear you that, you know, it it has to be all or none. So I mean, I say we kick it back to the ARB to come up with a policy that. You know, you can put a sign out of a certain size for a a short period of time to. To state your personal message. I mean, we'll have to, you know, think about the language of that and um and that. Obviously, it can't be obscene or um, you know, hate. Uh. But other than that, um, you know, I think that short period of time for that is is okay.
Yeah, I I would support what Melissa just said and the mayor's proposal. But I I would kick it back and ask an additional question. Because we do have the provision for political signs. And the difficulty that we're about to run into with political signs is that the election. Actually now is.
Eighty ninety days away.
Yeah, well, it's not that it's ninety days away. That's that's not the issue. People are voting at the end of September. So if you are putting in your uh, if your intent in putting a political sign up is. I support, you know, John Q. Uh, vote for John Q. It isn't the election day that is relevant. It's the day that they can start voting that's relevant. So it seems to me that we ought to look, we ought to throw this back to the ARB as as the mayor has said. Um, but also to ask that whole question of the sixty day limit that we have on. The election was for for uh uh political signs. Was something that was valid when we were all doing elections on election day. That is not going to be the case anymore. So we ought to look at whether the whole policy on that process in terms of timing should be changed as well.
Okay, good, good point. I could certainly, I can take all this back to the chairman of the ARB and discuss it. With him and have them come back to us with a proposal. And this would end up being in the ordinance and because we're doing these ordinance changes on the notes on the plat or whatever. We do have an opportunity to add some other things in, uh since we had to go through the public hearing and. The expensive advertising process. So I'll talk to Royce about that. Any other quick thoughts?
Um, I mean, just a quick thought, like, what are we going to do in the meantime? Because, you know, there's signs out for graduation still. And I mean, I think unless if we have this one sign that's been brought up in question, then all of them are in question. So maybe we do nothing because we haven't been on those particular personal messages. Um, you know, just sharing in the joy of what they're saying uh until we get, you know, some kind of a policy or decision from the ARB.
I'll read my inclination to um.
Yeah, I think.
Stand till we figure it out.
As as I see it, the action we're taking is asking the ARB to review the policy and present options. Um, my only comment is that I think we need to be extremely careful about limiting speech.
Second that, no, I totally agree. That's why I said, you know, you guys might not like what some of these people put on their personal message sign. It's their personal message.
Yeah.
It it'd be a tough road to go down to start saying, I like that, it's charming. I don't like that. It offends my morals or something. So, but we'll deal with that when the the ARB will deal with it and and tell us. You know, brilliant ideas. Okay.
Um. I do have a quick question. Is there, is there a carve out? I'm not intimately familiar with the sign ordinance. I've read it years ago, but when it first passed. Um, is there is a carve out for real estate signs? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, well, on the property, so you can't put them in air square or whatever, but there's.
Your home is for sale, you can put a sign up that states it's for sale and it can stay up as long as necessary to sell your house.
Well, it it has, it specifies how long after sale and so forth that um, you know, that it can stay up. And there's no policy for like open house signs that get thrown up on corners and stuff, but we kind of. Again, with on an open house, as long as they just go up that day and come down, but uh.
Well, there is a policy, it's, I mean, it's it's not, it's it's not allowed, but it it happens, but it's not covered by anything that's allowed.
Yeah.
It's the real estate sign has to be on the property that's for sale in town.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Okay, is there any uh? Is there any, uh, wait, not is there any streetscape? There's an update, right? Reagan? Funding?
Uh, we are still working with VDOT to uh. I mean, we were approved for additional funding. I think we reported that last time.
Okay, okay.
So we've been approved for the funding required for the project as it is designed. Um, we also know that, uh, just just to reiterate for the folks that may be on the call that don't know. Um, we did get a favorable ruling from VDOT uh, within the last thirty or forty five days. That the relocation of certain utilities that are within the project limits could be considered part of the project. Um, the additional funding that we received does not cover that part of it, but it does fully fund the original design of of the streetscape, the streets and sidewalks, et cetera. So the uh, the way ahead right now is is to uh. Work with the utility owners to find out the extent to which we can get things done under our franchise agreements, et cetera, with their concurrence. And find out what the true costs would be. Um, as we assess that. Um, in the meantime, we're also going back to uh. Confirm our exact financial status with the grants, et cetera, with VDOT to make sure that we're in. A perfect agreement with what's been granted today, the minor changes that we received for some of the additional work uh, with the. The CCTV investigations and some of the potholing, et cetera, and some of the utility investigation that we did as part of the project and added to it. There was a funding share for that, an additional funding that was provided. So Jerry Antis is in the is in the process of tying all that out with VDOT. Uh, so that we can report back exactly where we are. Um, another preliminary report that I can make is that uh. I can't remember the through month, Amanda, you may have to help me out with that, but the town had obligated. A hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars toward the streetscape design. And uh. We can confirm that the town's twenty percent match was so far made entirely with uh. In kind effort by the volunteers. So there's been no cash out. Uh, from the town. As part of the twenty percent match. I think that's correct, Amanda, correct? And that was through, which month did, was that calculated through?
Um. I, it was uh. It's current. We've actually submitted more in kind match than we've been able to spend. Um, so we actually have. Um, we're in the black. With the in kind. So if we incur additional expenses in the next few months. We can cover the town's twenty percent. With our in kind match. Thanks to our volunteers. And staff.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Okay. Um, communications committee use of town email addresses, just encouraging everyone to use them. I. I leave that to yourselves to determine. I think most people are. Redirection of Clifton VA dot com website to Clifton VA dot gov, uh, Clifton VA dot gov is our primary website. Um, we used to use Clifton VA dot com years ago and and I think we're just having it redirect.
That was taken care of. Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, so. Uh, and the problem we had was people relying, I'm on your dot com website and it's different or something like that. So just to make that go away. Um, okay. New committees, first one, Pink House Maintenance Committee. And we're also going to talk about HVAC under that. Pink House Maintenance Committee. Uh, the idea is there's enough to do on the pink house that we need a committee. Uh, I'm happy to be part of that because I'm already doing it. Um. And anyone else who wants to join. Let me know. I guess. Um, you know, don't volunteer at once, but. If you do. And I know that Melissa's looked into work that needs to be done at the pink house as well, and and we definitely want to pursue that. Um, we just have deferred maintenance down there with regard to. Siding, it's kind of funny. It's a cinder block building in the back, but um, siding's been nailed to it because it looks better. And some of the siding is falling off on the bottom, so we'll need to get new siding. There's some other wood rods that needs to be repaired and some things like that, so. There will be additional work that needs to be done. However. For the Pink House Maintenance Committee. The number one issue that we have right now is the HVAC system for the back building. Um, the back building has two heat pumps on it. And those heat pumps. Uh, were kind of limping along when had it inspected and looked at in end of April, early May. And and since it got hot, one of them, uh, one of the heat pumps died completely. And the other one as is twenty five years old. Um. Low refrigerant and about to be done. You might wonder why are there two units? No one really knows. It doesn't really make any sense. It's like a six hundred and eighty square foot building, eight hundred square feet, something like that. And inexplicably has two heat pumps and two air handlers, both in the ceiling because it's on a slab. Um, we've had four. Different service providers come out and give us proposals. On uh, replacing. The system, they would rip everything out and put in new stuff. Um, connect to the duct work that's already up there, but take out all the old systems. Put in a big. Efficient. New system. Um, with by by a high quality manufacturer. So we got. Four proposals. Uh, as you know, because everybody's got a house, it's not cheap. We have four proposals. Northern Virginia Mechanical Services. ARS Rescue Router, Curry, HVAC and Twin Air. Um, and the proposals were, and and all of them are three ton. Uh, fourteen to seventeen sear units. Variable speed air handlers, train, carrier. One of them pitched something called a manna, which is made by Goodman. And the bids range from seven thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars, next one's nine thousand, seven fifty five, twelve thousand. And fifteen thousand, so. Um, seventy six hundred dollars to fifteen thousand dollars for basically the same work. Um. So it's a good thing. We spent a week and a half or two weeks getting. Four different proposals.
Um, is is northern the folks that do the maintenance on the town hall?
I don't know.
No. I, they're not listed here.
Okay.
Okay. Northern, Northern Virginia, um. Theirs is seven thousand, six hundred and fifty five dollars. That's a three ton fourteen sear unit, but but including a variable speed air handler. That's a thousand dollar upgrade if you looked at your your stuff. And two and a half to three tons, about a five hundred dollar upgrade, but probably worth doing if you're going to do it. Uh, the idea there on the sizing of the unit is most of the time that's probably far more than you need. But if you ever had a meeting in there with fifteen people, you'd need a bigger capacity, so. Hence the idea. Um. Marginally higher efficiency, much higher money. You'll see that in the extra at the end, so. My thought is the Northern Virginia Mechanical Services. It's seventy six hundred. I'd probably allocate eighty five hundred to make sure that if they run into some duct work or something, we have it covered. But considerably less than everyone else. Uh, I've spoken to the guy many times. And they have, um, I I also checked, like, does that mean you'll do it in two months? They've managed to get all the equipment together, so they'd be able to work on it. It'd be done within a week, I think.
Um. Did we get any references from any of these or any? Customer testimonials or anything? Was that part of your process?
Um, no, we we got the phone book out and just sort of like through darts and no, we we. So ARS is who we use uh, at our house. So we personally have worked with them. They've installed many systems. The other three are all taken from the Clifton Community Facebook page. Um, we we looked, not me, I didn't do it. Phyllis went through and spent a huge amount of time. Getting references, looking at who's gotten good reviews, who do people recommend? And from that, that's how we compiled the list because I wasn't aware to start. So thanks to Phyllis. Who did all the legwork and has been down with all these people.
Appreciate that. That's good context to have.
Yep, and I was surprised at how different the uh. The proposals are in price. So. A- anyway, that that's what I would propose. I I also noted at the bottom. I got two hundred and twenty seven dollars in out of pocket cost for diagnostic charges that I'd asked to have approved for. Um, Phyllis and I to recover. As well for these people to do their thing originally. Uh, we brought them down hoping they'd be able to work magic and repair it or something. It just, you know, didn't work that way, especially. The older units, twenty five years old. It's uh, low on refrigerant and the refrigerant is R twenty two or something, so they just said, you 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 just can't do this. It's extraordinarily expensive to even put the coolant in and it's leaking, in which case you lose your coolant, so.
So are you making a proposal for a total amount of money that you could then? Uh, uh, spend? Uh, or authorized by the town council, or are you making a proposal for the specific purchase?
No, I'm making a proposal that uh, I'll make a motion that the town. Approve the proposal of Northern Virginia Mechanical Services to replace the HVAC system. For the back building at the pink house in an amount of up to eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And um, that the town reimburses. Phyllis and I the two hundred and twenty seven dollars for diagnostics charges that are out of pocket.
Second.
Any further discussion?
We're the landlord, we need to move out. I'm the landlord, we need to move out quickly, so.
Yeah. Well, e- exactly. That's why we wanted to move quickly on it and in the spring. Uh, it wasn't so bad. It it wasn't that hot and nobody was around because of COVID, but then they've decided to have an opening. And it was ninety six degrees. So the cool thing is. Um, they were in there with uh. Um. Uh, fans on, no lights on in bathing suits and stuff like that. So, you know, they're they're helping accommodate us, but we want to actually get on it quick, so. The ability to do it quickly was important. So uh, motion a second, any further discussion? Holloway, I.
Frosai.
Mel, I.
I'll uh.
Oh, I.
I'm I.
Okay. Very good. Holiday tree lighting event committee, is that, Daryl, you're the, you're in charge? Okay.
Yeah, um, we, I I had proposed several months ago to form an events committee, essentially a committee for any town related events. Of which that would fall under. So when this came up, I said, I'll take on, I'll take that on. So if we want to have a separate committee for tree lighting specifically, that's. That's fine if that's how we want to have it organized, but. Yeah, I'm happy to take that on.
Uh, I'd recommend we have a separate committee. Apart from the other committee, because people make. Uh, they focus so much on this particular one.
Sure.
I I understand that the reality is it's probably the exact same committee. But by giving it another name, it emphasizes the importance.
Yeah, we have a separate committee for the haunted trail as well, so that makes sense.
And the home store.
Yep. I will not be taking that one on.
All right, uh, next, select new town council representative for the parks committee. Chase was the parks committee person and Chase is. Uh, moved on to better things. Is there someone who wants to be the parks committee representative?
I think my name was already on the list.
All right, there you go.
Do we need motions on all this stuff or no?
Um, you said you're already the tree guy, but yeah, we can do those together. I'll make a motion to. Um. Have Daryl Poe serve as the chair of the holiday tree lighting event committee and Reagan McDonald serve as the chair of the the chair, the. Town council representative. On the parks committee.
What about the pink house uh? Chair?
And and uh, and and appoint me as the chair of the pink house maintenance committee.
Gotcha.
Second, glad to help you on that committee, Bill.
Great, thanks, man. All right, uh, motion a second. We'll do a roll call Holloway, I.
Frosai.
Mel, I.
Donald, I.
Oh, I.
To Pat, though.
Uh, I don't, I don't, his camera went out on my end. There you go.
Uh, fine, I, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now, yeah.
I don't have my camera. That's weird. Hold on.
Good job.
You're back.
Hey, Bill.
Yes.
Is uh, we we talked about the pink house is um, under new business, are we going to talk about the uh, you know, the repairs that need to be done elsewise to the HVAC?
Outside the HVAC.
Uh, other than HVAC?
Yeah, we need, we took bids last.
I I'd ask that to be on the agenda.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can approve all that tonight. Sure.
Yeah, we have bids in. I think Melissa has evaluated them. And there's some pretty critical stuff.
Okay.
I just, we we, I wanted that on the agenda. I didn't know if we missed it on new business or whether we were going to cover it now when we were talking about the pink house.
Yeah, let's do it under pink house.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so um. So last year, you know, we talked about all the uh, the repairs that were necessary and Reagan and I went out and got two bids. Um, and the bid that is from um. The person, uh, Florentio Contreras, who has done a lot of work for the town, um, was the most reasonable bid. And uh, the work basically uh, involves replacing a lot of the rotten window frame portions on. Rotten soffit and fascia areas, painting, um, securing the gutters where they're hanging off. Um, reattaching siding that isn't rotten, that's just hanging off, um, removing that rotten doghouse in the back. Um, and then the four posts that are on the front building that are rotten at the bottom, um, and very unstable, replacing those. Uh, so it's quite a lot of work. Um, so the cost for all of that is thirty four fifty. So I would like to make a motion to approve four thousand dollars, uh, just in case, you know, things come up as as they uncover. Uh, some of the rotten areas, um. To to make these repairs on the pink house, both buildings.
That's up to four thousand dollars.
Up to four thousand.
And it's to do the work that you identified in the proposal?
Yep.
Second.
All right, motion a second, any uh, further discussion? All right, roll call Holloway, I.
Frosai.
Mel, I.
McDonald, I.
Poe, I.
Fine, I.
Okay. The next item is the whole town committee list. Is any, are people okay with putting this off? Until next month. We got a lot of stuff left.
Make a motion to table this until the September council meeting.
Second.
Second.
All right.
Third.
Okay, we'll do uh, acclamation, all in favor, I.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. BCA, um, renew appointment of Marilyn Stoney. Amanda, is there a particular term here?
I think it's um. Two years, but I would have to check.
All right, I got it here. Uh, Marilyn Stoney's. Term expired on July one, twenty twenty, so. I'd like to make a motion to have the council. Reappoint Marilyn Stoney to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
It's to recommend appointment.
Yes, I know. I was going to explain that nuance to our people. Though we got a motion a second. The the point is, the point is the court has to do this. We we simply recommend it.
Or nominating, okay.
Well, there's more, unfortunately, it's a very process heavy thing. But it is what it is. So, yeah, just because we say she's on doesn't mean she's on.
She's got to get Senate confirmation, right?
Yeah, there's more process to be done, but thanks for that clarification. Um, any further discussion? Roll call Holloway, I.
Frosai.
Mel, I.
McDonald, I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
All right, um. The CARES Act, do you want to just give us a brief update?
Uh, yeah, we have finally, finally, pretty much finished up the entire process. It took a lot of legal writing and craziness, but we've done it. Uh the, there were four grants uh of of ten thousand dollars each, which is the maximum that we could do based on what the county was doing. Um and this just happened a couple of days ago. We finally got everything cleared. Uh two of the checks have been picked up. Two of the checks have not been picked up yet. I still have them. Uh but we're essentially done. Uh I just I can't tell you how complicated this turned out to be. And uh Bill and I have been musing back and forth that if we had known what this would have taken, when they first sent us the check, we should have just sent it back. But it's done now. We have four businesses who have been taken care of. The reason it has gone down to four is because most of the other businesses in town that were eligible through our process have now gone into the lottery and are eligible in the county process. And by law, you can't have two CARES uh grants from s- in in the same process. So if they're eligible for the county, or if they turn out not to be eligible for the county, and therefore they don't get the money, they would be ineligible for ours also. So it it's it's a total wash. So because because the county added another twenty million dollars, they are now supporting more Clifton businesses, which allowed us to support the businesses that were left uh with more money. So it worked. So that's it. The only possibility we have is one of them uh may wind up still getting approved by the county. Uh and for re- there are reasons that they would take the county money rather than our money, and we might get some money back.
Would we, would we distribute those funds to the remaining three applicants?
I I, no.
Oh, we can't because we're at the maximum of ten thousand, right?
Right. Um so.
Say who the who the four businesses were, or no?
I am reluctant to do that in an, oh, I I I have been keeping this confidential. I I'm, I just, yeah. I I don't think that's appropriate. Um but if we get money back, then I would come back to the council and say, Eric, what do you want to do with this? What do you want to do with this?
It'll go back into our pot, and I assume we'll we'll use it for the election or whatever.
It's the party after the election.
Oh, Lord.
Yep, okay, thank you, Steve. Um you guys can't imagine how much work Steve's done, and I think one of the blessings of it, along with a lot of the other things we're doing here, are forging tighter connections, both Steve and Marilyn as well, who had regular meetings with the county on this, and I believe continues to do so, forging stronger relationships, better commu- communication with the county, um which is important for all the reasons you've seen.
And I imagine with our business community as well.
Yes, absolutely. And uh as we've always said, we want to support the business community. While here, we're really doing it in spades. So ended up being quite a significant boost for the businesses involved. Move on to new business, uh moving up at the request. It's all relative. Um because it's a long meeting, but moving up at the request of the uh proponent, the natural landscaping and Bluebird Trail. Going to start with the funding for the Bluebird Trail and the Floodplain Park. The short version is been looking at this for about a year. Bluebirds, they're small, they're blue, uh they require a certain kind of box and they're happy and uh they're endangered or semi-endangered or something. They're good birds. We like them. They're native. And uh they proposed to put them up uh along the trail in the floodplain. They've asked us for five hundred and thirty three dollars for the cost of supplies to construct and put up five bluebird boxes. And happy to hear uh comments from the proponents that I think are on, but I I don't know that we need to. It seems like a good thing if anyone has any questions, thoughts. So the only thing is whether we bump it to five fifty or even six hundred dollars, so then I'll come back for twenty bucks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve up to six hundred dollars for the construction of Bluebird Trail as proposed.
Of five, of five.
Okay.
It's six hundred dollars for five boxes.
Sure, I I uh whatever they've proposed, yes.
Got it, got it. Six hundred dollars to fund what's in the proposal.
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that. Melissa, did someone else?
I did. That's fine. You did it at the same time.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Roll call Holloway, I.
Frosai.
Melmy.
McDonald.
Poe, I.
Fine, I.
I'd also like to just thank the uh the committee, um Laura and and her uh colleagues for putting in the work on this and making projects like this happen in town. It's awesome.
If 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 anyone who is already on the screen wants to say something, I think we ought to let them say it.
Absolutely.
I don't know how we'd know, but if we do, if anybody lets me know, I'm happy to as well. Uh the next, the next one, there is somebody. So.
Felicia was here to talk about the Bluebird Trail if you all have any questions.
Yeah. I don't think we have any questions, but everybody's keen on it.
Thank you, Felicia, for sitting through the last two hours and fifteen minutes. I really appreciate it.
It it was six hundred dollars, you know?
Yeah. Trust me, that's more than I make at my day job.
And and we haven't done natural, native, natural landscaping yet. So I don't know if that requires more discussion. W- we we're moving right into resolution regarding natural native landscaping on town properties. Do you want to say something about that?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the council members and anyone else that's present understood the the history behind this um and that uh um are, my day job with the Audubon Society of Northern Virginia has been working on this with the county for over ten years to get a resolution passed that um the county use native plantings on all county properties. And this year, um that was unanimously approved on June ninth. And we also are very, very lucky um to have Margaret Fisher, who does not live in town, but is a neighbor right outside of town. And um she is driving force behind Plant Nova natives and is also happy to answer any questions you have and is also presented a statement. Um obviously, we can't tell people what to plant on their own property. We would certainly encourage and are happy to talk to anyone about what they could plant on their property to enhance the habitat. But we really have a unique um opportunity to hear here. The Fairfax County is the first in the country to adopt this type of resolution. And we can join them and really create a better environment for the birds, butterflies, dragonflies, and um insects.
Can I just get a clarification? I I'm pretty sure I understand this, but unfortunately, in the in the agenda, it just says plantings on town properties. You're talking about properties that the town owns.
Correct. Yeah, we we can't tell people what to do on their own property, but uh Margaret um is also a volunteer with Audubon um Society of Northern Virginia um in our Audubon at Home program, where we provide a a free service to talk to people about how they can create habitat on their own property. So if anybody's interested, there's, you know, there's an opportunity for that. You can also get your your yard certified as habitat friendly. But I'm talking about town property. Um I think there's been some discussion too with the streetscape that the plantings that we do will be native only. Um I know that we're going to have to replace the tree at Air Square. It would be great if we could pick an a native tree that will last. We won't have to worry about for fifty or sixty or seventy years, things like that.
Okay, my my thought on this is it took Fairfax County ten, ten years to get on board with this. I think we could move more quickly, but probably um longer than ten minutes. And I'd like to see the resolution that's proposed, and I'd like, and I don't just mean see it. I mean, I'd like to see it and have the rest of the council see it and read it and understand what it means and what restrictions we might be putting on ourselves that we might not think about.
Sure, and I sent, um I thought I had sent Amanda the links to everything and and but I'm happy to follow up and do that again tomorrow.
A- and the the key there, the key there would be, a- and whether it's you or Amanda, I want the council members to actually get a PDF of a piece of paper, not a link to go find something. And that's what we'll think about. I I'm a big fan of native plantings. I think it's great. I'm very supportive of this. On the other hand, as a steward of the community, we have to be uh wary of entering into something that might have unexpected consequences for us. And it probably doesn't, but we need to take the time to read it and and do it right. That that's my thought. Others?
I'm I'm in favor of it, but I agree that we should be thoughtful about adopting it. We should know what we're adopting instead of just saying blanket yes, but
Yep.
Yeah, it's something that I'm definitely in support of. And if there's a a resource that we can link to from the town website, um Laura, that you can share for, you know, anybody, uh we're we're looking at making enhancements to the website. And uh I would love to be able to link to a an online resource for residents to be able to get that consult that you were referring to or what have you.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'd like to encourage the the town to be a beacon for this sort of thing. I just want to make sure that I know what we're being a beacon for before we do it, but uh just like exactly what you said, Daryl, exactly the words that are in my mind. I'm a hundred percent on board. But want to make sure that I know exactly what we're signing up to. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great. The more I learn about it, I think the more other people would be interested in it and uh the unintended consequences of things that have been done around the country for decades is really eye-opening once you you realize.
Yeah.
You know, the direction that some places have gone unknowingly. So I think it's a great initiative. It'll be great to have that in place.
And and Margaret, I was I was able to assist Margaret today. Uh there was what a five, five or six hour Zoom conference for um landscape professionals in Northern Virginia, and our keynote speaker was fantastic. Um I I wish there was a recording that I could share with you all, um but it's our job to care for the land.
Sounds great. I think I think by us being educated on this and making an informed decision, it will allow us to be better uh spokespeople for this as well. So all good. Look forward to it, and this is something we're excited about pursuing.
Thank you.
Laura, Laura, it would be really helpful if we could find out how to eradicate those plants that are not friendly to our environment.
Margaret is an expert on that, and so is Reagan, actually.
Lots of hard work is what it's called.
Lots of hard work.
I know.
Happy to consult.
Pull it.
Okay, great.
I thought that was roundo. No? Little environmental humor. Okay, good times. Um, all right, so yes, we want to do that. And I I've talked to Laura about the bees. The I talked to Laura about the birds and the bees. The Bluebird Trail, the pollinators, um this native landscaping. I really think this is something that Clifton could take on and be an example for other communities. You know, there there's not a lot of other stuff that it's hard for us to do. This is something we can do, and we got lots of plants and stuff on our various properties. So I think this would be fun to do. I want to take it seriously. I I want to be educated. Laura, at some point, I wouldn't mind having either a presentation, not from you, but you know how you listen to somebody and they gave this awesome presentation? We could even play one of those at one of these town council meetings for five minutes or ten minutes or whatever it is. And use that as a platform to get the information out there and educate ourselves. So we should think about opportunities for that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um on to new banner stating Clifton is committed to racial justice discussion and approval. And and so everybody knows, you know, I always get these things about, oh, you're trying to do this or that, or uh you guys have decided this or that. The reason this is on here in black and white, and so it's absolutely clear is we wanted no one to say, I had no idea. They were looking at a banner. I had no idea what they were thinking about that it might say. Okay, so nothing is a surprise. And in fact, Reagan was quite helpful in the last meeting where we could have just steamrolled into this because everybody was all hyped up about it and said, wait a sec. Uh we hadn't even talked about a new banner with new wording yet. We need to make sure everybody has an opportunity to know what it is we're talking about. So when it happens, then we'll go, I didn't know you were thinking about this. So we deliberately, deliberately put it off to this meeting and gave everybody an opportunity to look at it, attend, talk, watch, whatever. A- and got the agenda out in plenty of time, so everybody would know, and it would be no surprise to anybody what's going on. That's why it's on the agenda. That's why it's on the agenda the way it is. And that's why it's on the agenda as seven A, which we're uh addressing third. So so that's the backdrop. And from our last meeting, which was a special meeting, I I think uh uh which was another reason, because we got this, don't do anything outside of a regular meeting. So we wanted to make sure it was at a regular meeting and everybody had a chance. It's like, no matter what you do, somebody doesn't like it. But there's a reason why, a reason why we did it the way we did. So what this is picking up is not surprisingly, exactly what we said we would put on the agenda at the last meeting. What we'll do, if anything, is up to the council to determine. And one of the reasons we had citizens' remarks early is so that people could get it out there and would actually be listened to and thought about and percolated on before we got to this point in in the agenda. All this stuff is very specifically planned as opposed to people say stuff right before we vote on something else. Okay, so with that backdrop, um this is the item we said we would have on the agenda. Before we start, on the banner itself, I'll give you an update on VDOT. Um yesterday, yesterday, VDOT reached out to me and said they will offer the town a blanket permit for three to five years. I don't know why they said three to five, but I think five's better. Um to put up banners of our choice in the specific location. Okay, so they do require us to um submit an application. They asked about whether we give them a hundred dollars. I I asked them whether they could waive the fee for governmental organization. We will see. So we have to actually submit the application that says what you would expect. I'd like a blanket permit for five years, put a banner up at this location on Clifton Road at the corner of Main and Main and Clifton. Um the one wrinkle, the one wrinkle is the off-the-shelf rack rate thing that they have is it must be twenty one feet. Uh most observer observers have said they don't think it's twenty one feet. I'd like to find out, Pat, perhaps uh approximately how many feet it is.
Yeah, I I meant to get that measurement today and then it rained, so I'll do that.
And send it to me. And then I want to be upfront. I don't want to do any, you know, jujitsu, smoke and mirrors deal. If we say to them, um we'd like an exception, it's approximately sixteen feet, it's approximately eighteen feet, whatever it is. And we'd like an exception for that. And uh banners have been put up in this location for thirty-plus years with no safety issues or any ish other issues, and send that in. And I think we could have that resolved in in a week or less. Certainly by the next council meeting, but uh in a week, maybe two weeks with VDOT. So there is a path to resolution, and that path would allow uh a blanket permits or for pancake dinners and um Clifton Day and and everything else. So people will not have to come in with a permit every time, which is what we're trying to avoid.
Would this blanket permit be renewable upon completion? In other words, can we just easily renew that five-year permit for another five years?
I I hope so, but we'll find out. And it may be one of these things where if we can get five years as a blanket permit, um we'll get to five years, and in four and a half years, we'll figure out what to do with it. And my my guess is this. I think if we said, can we have an evergreen renewal that goes for infinity um until the apocalypse, they'll probably say no. But if we say five years and in four and a half years, we say everything's awesome, there've been no issues, we won't have a problem rolling it over. That's my guess of how it'll fall out. So, yeah, I I agree.
One, one thing, just on the physical stuff.
I know Pat's been looking at a new design for the construction and there's problems with the. Wires there, which I assume we're going to take care of. But we also, in terms of size. There are a whole bunch of organizations in town that have already paid for. Signs that they put up every year. So we want to make sure that whatever the sizes that they've been using for the last. Twenty years, they don't have to go out and build, you know, buy a new sign. So that's one of the things we have to look at.
Yeah, and the way to take that into account is, Pat, it could be a sign is not two feet, it's three feet. Which is what the the one we had was. So when you figure out how how far it is, just take that into account.
Yeah, we also figure out what our widest sign is because the pole that was up there was twenty feet and then somebody at some point added. Two foot extensions on either end. So you could literally put a. Twenty four foot wide banner on there. I think that's probably too big, but we we can set those guidelines.
I I just want to protect the guys with the pancake breakfasts and so on. They've already got the signs. We have to make sure that it's whatever that size is at least.
The 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 banners rules from two thousand twelve that's on the website actually has sixteen by two on it. And I'm pretty sure people have put things on that are three and twenty by three. But but we don't have to say to VDOT, the sign will be this big by this big. We just have to say it'll be.
This far off the ground.
Off the ground, yeah. Okay, uh, that's the update on VDOT. So I know that's something we need to get resolved before we put pancake breakfast or anything else up there. But there is, I've been been working with various parties and our. Elected officials have been helping out as well to bring resolution to this matter and, you know, shout out. To him for helping with that. And so we have a path to be able to actually do something. So. With that in mind, we move back to the item on the agenda. And Steve, I don't know if you want to.
Yes.
Since you finished last time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I. I was the one who made it clear that I was going to make a a a a motion to put up a new sign, but not. A Black Lives Matter sign. And there's a reason behind that. And I I would stick with that tonight. And I I want to explain it a little bit because I I, you know, respectfully disagree with the folks who spoke earlier. On this issue. I take. My cue also from black leadership. And the black leadership I'm listening to is John Lewis. And yeah, we did do something and we we created good trouble. And I think it was necessary trouble. And I think it was good. I think it was appropriate. And I think it had the effect it was intended to have, which was to. Wake people up to a problem that we've been ignoring for an awfully long time. And it did that. And then we had, you know, somebody, a vandal. And the vandal actually. Uh, is doing something for us that I think is helpful. Uh, and if you go back and you listen to uh. President Obama's eulogy for John Lewis. He pointed out that when Lewis was uh, had got his head fractured. Uh, at the Pettis Bridge and was taken to the hospital. And he woke up in the hospital. And found out what had actually happened. In other words, that the troopers had obviously cracked his head open. Uh, but that it had been seen all over the country. He didn't react by saying we have to go after the troopers. He reacted by saying, good, that means more people will join us. And he kept his eye on the ball, which was Voting Rights Act. And he went right back out to get a Voting Rights Act, not to worry about the vandal or the trooper who hurt him. And I think that we have to learn from John Lewis on this one. I think we make a big mistake. I mean, I I I think Daryl was absolutely right. In every one of our discussions on the Black Lives Matter banner, and I voted for the Black Lives Matter banner at the time. Because he's right. It's a strong statement. Uh, it is uncomfortable for some people. It was intended that way and it had that effect. But the term Black Lives Matter or that banner is not what we're trying to accomplish. What we're trying to accomplish is dealing with racial inequality, racial justice. Um, you know, policing and criminal justice. There are a whole bunch of things. And in Clifton. It also means we have to look at our own history. And I think we've got a committee now, uh, a a committee that is doing some really incredible work very quickly. And it was in, it was instructive to me that their own mission statement. Says that they are working for racial equality, justice and healing. So I I unless the committee doesn't want me to do that. Um, I would suggest that we change my original proposal, which was uh, racial justice. Um, to racial equality, justice and healing, because I think that is, they've worked on that. They said that was their mission statement. I think they should work on that. I think that the town should absolutely support that. Uh, Daryl has been very active in that group. Uh, and but I don't think we should spend our time. Fighting over the vandal. Or being diverted by specific language. I I think that. The Black Lives Matter banner did what it was supposed to do. It made people uncomfortable. I know there are people on this town council who think that it was divisive. Wasn't intended to be divisive. It was intended to wake people up and it did. But we don't need to do that again. They're awake. Uh, so now that has given us the opportunity, and I'm going to stop in a second. Um, that has given us the opportunity because that sign was about to be taken down. I mean, it was only going to be up for another ten days or a little longer than that, and it was going to be taken down anyway. So. That being the case, the vandal has given us an opportunity, just like those cops on the Pettits Bridge gave John Lewis an opportunity. And that is, we can now, and I think we should, absolutely respond to that vandal by saying, no, we're going to put up another sign. And we're going to put up another sign for, and it's the council's decision, thirty days, sixty days. And but it's going to talk about our standards, where we are trying to go. For racial equality, justice and healing. And that's what I would propose. That Clifton is committed to racial equality, justice and healing. And we can let everybody know that.
Just real quick, one thing I want to add, it's not about the message. The the VDOT permit is very specific on thirty days max for any banner.
All right.
So it just is what it is. Discussion.
Um, I would like my fellow council members to consider what might happen if any other banner were torn down and what actions would be taken. In response to any other banner saying any other thing that was approved to hang in that spot if it were torn down. Um, think about what 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 we would do in response to that. I I believe we wouldn't even need to have a meeting. The banner would be replaced as it was. Immediately, it wouldn't require action of the council. It would be replaced.
And I also would like to add that, as Corey and Bethany stated. I mean, we had an overwhelming amount of support for the original language at multiple meetings. I mean, and from the town residents who elected us to represent them. Um, we had very, very little. Communications formally that were against it. In fact, it was overwhelmingly in support of it. And that's who we represent. And so I just think I heard what you said, Steve, but we approved a certain language and that's what we raised and that's what the town supported. And I feel like I I'm not against your message. I mean, I think it's, it, you know, it's it's a good message. But but that's actually what what the town residents supported. Um, and I think what I heard tonight, again, I'm also at the last meeting, um, is that they prefer it to remain the same. Um, so who are we listening to?
Well, may, may I respond to that?
Sure.
Um, I think that the answer to that question. Is that we did do something that the entire town, or not the entire town, but a lot of people, as you said, um, supported. Uh, and those same people want us to continue doing things that establish the value statement that this town has made. As soon as it becomes clear that we are no longer debating about a value statement. We are debating about how we piss off somebody or not piss off somebody or what what particular language is as opposed to the value statement. We've been diverted from our goal. And uh, we've gotten emails over the last, I mean, I've gotten emails over the last day supporting the language that is in the agenda. So it's not like people don't support one and do support another. It's a question of what we're trying to accomplish. And I think what we're trying to accomplish is to say what Clifton. What Clifton's value statement is and where we're trying to go. And even the committee. And I know there are people on that committee who who really value the term Black Lives Matter. I understand that.
I I will say.
We're we're trying to do here.
I will say, Steve, I I polled the committee for alternative language and. Universally, the committee preferred the original language.
Oh, I I have I have no doubt of that. I have no doubt of that. Um, but the question is, what is the purpose for the town? Are are we, are we trying to pick, are we trying, we we accomplished something and we, in essence, hit people over the head. We created good trouble, okay? And it was necessary trouble. But it worked. Are we trying to create the same trouble again? For what purpose?
I mean, I think it's the same purpose as it was before, for a a point in place in time with a certain message aimed at. A certain group of people who.
In the language of their choosing. Sorry.
Exactly. And and that is what we voted and approved for sixty days. Now, as Bill said. We we can only approve at thirty, but we have the opportunity tonight. To approve what the message you said necessary trouble. But that that wasn't our goals. Our goals was to start a conversation, which we did. And and it was a, it was a good conversation. Our second goal was to make anybody who maybe perhaps didn't feel so welcome right now in the town. Feel more welcome. And and I think we accomplished that and and we could keep accomplishing that. And the third thing was. To start a grassroots um, message. Uh, which has happened also because the banner provoked. Um, a group to form that is, you know, looking at all different ways to look, you know, to help racial justice. So to say that it was necessary trouble, that that wasn't its goals. It it may have created, um, but that's that's the thing. It's a it's a hard thing. To have this conversation. And now we're going to change the message. Um, because of what? When the town was overwhelmingly supportive?
And.
I would jump in here and say that I I think the first debate should be, you know, not a specific issue, you know, we're already well into a specific issue, but. Given that we have the time to reflect, the the town should take a step back and debate what the role of the town should be in social and political issues. And what responses as a town, you know, we we would. Advocate and approve to take on behalf of those. We've, it seems to me that we've. Gone past a broader question of whether the the town should take positions on things. And I've got, you know, all kinds of person, we all have all kinds of personal positions. But the first question we need to ask is what what is the best interest of the town and what should the town's position be? And it shouldn't be a, you know, a tally of how many emails we've gotten and and. Support or against a certain issue. It's whether or not we take on issues. And and advertise those and take a position. And there's a lot of issues out there. We could. We could advocate or oppose any number of things. I mean, go down the list, whether it's. Planned Parenthood or, you know, you name it. It's it's just, it's endless after that. So. I would much prefer that we have a uh, a debate around, you know, the mission of the town versus how many things we take on.
I I think Steve summed it up nicely in our last meeting when we have, you know, twenty million people in the streets and every major city in the United States with, you know, throngs of people protesting in support of this cause. I think that's an indication. Um, and if there's another issue that comes along that that goners that kind of a movement, we should consider it.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I also think that, I mean, we we are asked all the time on to say that we never wade into political issues. I mean, we do. And the thing is, we vote on that each time somebody has raised an issue to the council or the or a council member has raised it. And it takes a majority, just like anything else, to to be able to pass that. And the majority passed. Um, that motion in June.
There were no votes against it.
Exactly. And the council also supported, you know, uh, legal action against closing Clifton Elementary. Um, we have taken action against the Chesapeake with the Chesapeake watershed to protect that. So to say we never wade into some. Almost everything we do can be viewed political insofar as there are people that support it or there are people that don't support it. So. We do this. And the thing is, we vote each time we have that opportunity and we did vote.
But the truth is, we don't put banners up about everything. Just, I I'm not taking a position one or the other, but just saying that's different here.
Yeah, sometimes we send letters, you know.
You're absolutely right, Bill. Uh, but I think Reagan's concern. Of opening floodgates, uh, as Daryl pointed out, is not really. A major concern of mine, certainly. This was a watershed event and and very, very different. And in terms of political statements. Towns all over this country and certainly in Virginia. Adopted and made political statements by putting statues of Robert E. Lee up. On traffic circles all over the state. And those were definitely political statements. Uh, you didn't want to call, not you, but people didn't want to call them political statements. But they were absolutely political statements. So now we're saying an opposite political statement. And that's fine, too. I I I I don't have that problem. But I think Melissa made a point. And that is. You you articulated the three objectives that we were trying to achieve. By putting up the Black Lives Matter sign and you said we achieved all three. That's right. I agree a hundred percent with you. And therefore I think we have to look forward and say. Okay, we achieved those objectives. What is the point of continuing to try to achieve the objectives we've already achieved as of continuing and moving forward? That's what I think we ought to do.
I will add here that um, there there are really two questions. And the first one may be going, but the first question is, will we put up another banner? And the second question is, what will it say? We're talking about what will it say? We've just assumed we'll put up another banner. What what we put up. Clearly was extraordinarily divisive uh, among many people for many reasons. One of them was. Don't wade into political issues. I don't like people yelling stuff in the town. Um, I don't like, I think it's a different issue. I feel different. The this group advocates this and that, but. You cannot argue that it was not divisive. I know from all the hate mail that I got. But we did it. We did it. And we said, you know what? I don't know what will happen, but let's do it and let's see what happens. And we provoked a huge amount of discussion. And we sent a very strong message to the community, but it came with a cost, like a lot of this stuff often does. The uh, the the vandals stole the sign. It was going to come down anyway. Um, and and now we have an opportunity to go, okay, what do we do going forward? And what we do going forward could be to say, let's do nothing. It could be to say, let's go backwards and do what we just did before, because we'll really show those guys this time. Or we could use it as an opportunity to say something new. Love the earth, smell the flowers or. What what Steve said, which which is nice, but I'm just saying you could use it as an opportunity to move forward with a new message. One that when I hear healing, I'd love to have something where everybody on the council. Um, and everybody in the community go, I really support that. That's really nice as opposed to, I really hate that or, oh, I really love that. Um, and and not that we wouldn't do that because we did do that. And it had a lot of effect. The question is, where do we go? Do we go backward to what we did, which we can, we can, we have the ability to do that. Do we do nothing? Do we move forward with something else? And hopefully. And hopefully, if we did move forward, it would be something that every member of the council would go, you know what? I'm not a big political message dude, but you know what? That's a nice thing. I I'm I'm fine with that. Or something where we end up with a vote that's not unanimous or not close and that people are not happy about. We can still do that. But that's that's my concern, and we have an opportunity to go, you know, one way or or the other. But if we do go back to what we had before, which in my mind achieved all the goals we had for it a hundredfold, far more than we ever could have imagined. Now that we've achieved that, do we go back and reopen that? Which there'll be people that like and people that'll be bitter, and believe me, we'll get a bunch of new nasty email about it. Or do we put something else up? And the whole whole world's going to look and go, wow, that's really great. If it is great, maybe maybe it isn't great, but look at it and go, wow, isn't that nice? I really like what they've done there. And people will watch and they will reflect on it. That's really the question before us. You know, do we put up a new banner and what does it say? Do we go back to what we had to show people? Or or do we put something else up there that perhaps is more unifying, but but not? I don't see how it could be perceived as negative, but but very positive. I don't know what the outcome is, but I'd sure love to see something where every member on this council goes, you know what? I really feel good about that. I really feel this represents the community well. This is what this town should be doing. And, you know, we all want to put our arms around the community and and gather the community in. So I I don't know, but that's that's my thought reflection as I listen to the discussion.
I think something I said, welcome back, Second Baptist, would be more appropriate.
That would be amazing. Yes.
That's that's here. It's not a political issue. It's something that happened. It impacted a lot of people in this town.
Yes.
And it's current, it's current and relevant.
Wow, wow. And we're holding our hand out to these guys right now. And we are saying we want to join with you as a community. And they're like, are you sure? It used to be that way in the old days. Do you really want to? Yes, people really do. I keep telling them that. And the history these guys have, when we told them we have people who know about Clifton from the eighties, they literally all started laughing. Because to them, it's Clifton in the thirties, forties, fifties. That's the Clifton they know and the history these guys can share and what they can do. You want to talk about a local, real-life grassroots issue where you can make a difference? That would. That's a cool idea. Haven't thought about it.
You know, something just occurred to me in thinking about what Steve said about John Lewis and the Edmund Pettus Bridge. You know, they initially marched on the bridge, got to the top of the bridge and turned around. They marched and got beaten, and then they marched on that bridge and walked over the bridge. They went back and did the same thing again. They fought the fight because it was a fight worth fighting. I'm concerned that we're allowing our message to be policed by vandals. And that changing this message to a completely different message tells people that if you don't like what it says, destroy it. It encourages people to take this action. And I think that it's important for us to address that in whatever message we put back on the banner, put back up, you know, in in place on a banner. So I I think that's something to be mindful of. We can't encourage this kind of vandalism and criminal behavior simply because people disagree with the message that's put up.
I I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you on that. But the message we were putting up had to do with a movement. And the movement was for racial justice. It wasn't for specific words. And if we're saying, if we're saying, again, look, you you can tear it down, but we're going to put it back up and say, we are not only going to put it up, we're going to say it again. We are in favor of racial justice. We are in favor of equality. We are in favor of healing, whatever those words are. I I just use those because that happens to be the the group's mission statement. But by saying that, we aren't giving in to anybody. We're saying, we're going to say it again. We may not use the same language. We may use different language for a very specific reason. But we're not giving in to anybody. Indeed, they've given us the opportunity to put it up for another thirty days instead of having to take it down in ten.
Well, I would, I think if we are going to change the language, I would like to include something along the lines of, you know, Clifton is still committed to these issues. Sending the message that in spite of the acts of these criminal vandals, we are still committed to our mission. So, you know, if we're composing the text of the banner and it's going to change, I think we need to be sending that message that if you if you try to stop this, if you try to, you know, vandalize the sign or pull something down, we're, you know, we are going to continue this conversation because we're committed to this mission.
Yeah, I'm willing to listen to that, but please recognize that we obviously are very aware that a sign was torn down. And there are a few people around town who are aware of that, but somebody driving through Clifton sees the term still. It's a little strange. I I'm not opposed to it, you know, but it's a strange construct.
Well.
I like the idea of Clifton is committed, what Darrell said, committed, we're committed, we're resolved. Resolved to what? I mean, it it does. I know this is going to sound strange, but Black Lives Matter, we were way out in front on that. Now everybody and their mother is like putting it everywhere. It's it's not as fresh as it was. We have an opportunity for thought leadership here as to where where do you go? Okay, cool. Got my attention. Where do you go? What does it mean? What is it that Clifton, per Reagan's point, what is Clifton committed to here? That would be piffy, that would make make a point. Steve's talked about a couple ideas coming from the committee. Racial justice, racial equality. The healing thing. And that comes from the committee, as I understand it. That's a big deal. People aren't talking about that. They're still banging each other over the head with rocks and other stuff. We want to look down the road towards healing and bringing people back together. And I got to tell you, like with Second Baptist, that is what we're doing right now. Is people have been through a lot, and it's like, all right, how do we pick things up and move forward and move forward together? I love that healing message. I'd really like to see that woven in. And honestly, to me, that strikes me as different. That seems like leadership. We hear a lot of, you know, give me this, give me that. The healing thing, that's a that's neat. That's a big deal. Not by itself, not only that, but as part of the message, I really liked that that resonated.
I'm I'm curious, did I didn't take part, participate in any of the Second Baptist stuff other than some logistics at the town hall? But did you speak with any of that, the the congregation about the banner? And did you get their their input on what happened? Have have they shared their opinion on it?
Yeah, they they loved the banner. The idea of the banner saying black people are are welcome here. We get that you're here and we hold our hand out to you. They love that. And they were upset that it was torn down, and they said, we'd sure like to help the town put a banner back up. So they were very positive. They got the message. It wasn't lost on them. So yes, it was very positive. They were very supportive and and it meant something to them.
My concern is that in whatever message we put back up, I I don't want to be seen as conceding to the hateful people that tore it down. And and seeking to make people that disagreed with the banner more comfortable with whatever message we put up there. That that's troubling to me, that that people that would take the step to destroy property in in opposition to this message, we should be concerned about making them feel more comfortable about whatever language is on that banner.
No, again, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay, man.
I I think, again, I'm going to refer back to the eulogy that that Barack Obama gave at John Lewis's funeral. And he pointed out, he said, you know, when that took place on the Pettus Bridge, in all likelihood, the troopers thought they had won. And of course, they didn't win because the process continued and we got a Voting Rights Act bill out of it. It wasn't, we got Southern Christian Leadership Conference Voting Rights Act. It wasn't, we got the the SNCC con thing out of it. It wasn't specific words. It was an objective. And the objective we're looking for in Clifton, it seems to me, is to figure out how we do things that can add to racial equality, racial justice and healing. And I think the 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 church issue is one of them. I think we have to be very proud of the fact that while everybody was shooting at us and saying, well, you're just doing this to 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 make an image, to get an image. You're using it for image and then you're just yeah, it's performative. Thank you. In fact, we got a committee going that was really going strong. We've already recognized that we move, we we potentially should be doing something with our park in terms of naming it for the people who actually lived here and and developed Clifton. We've recognized that the signs around Clifton have to be changed to include the history that we have left out. So we are doing a lot of stuff, and we have to be proud of that, and we have to say it. And and that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to promote any given organization. We're not trying to promote any specific language. I I have been a writer for years. I've I've written columns for forty years and I've had editors for forty years. And what I learned in communicating is if I write something and then my eye stops when I read it over again, or the editor's eye stops when I read it over or they read it over again, you've lost what you were trying to communicate. Now you're focused on those words. So the best thing you can do is throw those words out, get some other words, if that's what you're trying to do, trying to get an objective across. And that's what, that's why I'm trying to do what I'm doing. I I don't care about specific words. I care about the objective.
I and I appreciate what you're what you're after, Steve. I think our goals are the same. I I've stated my concerns. And, you know, we had a motion to to put the same language back up there. And whether it failed because it wasn't at this agenda item or because there just isn't support on the council for that language again, who knows? But I might, you know, I think we share the same goals, but I I have deep concerns about changing the language to to appease the people who tore it down, frankly.
Bill, we had a hand up for quite a while in the
Yeah.
Participants, if we can recognize or.
Well, that that's a question. Do we want to open it up for everyone who happens to be out there to speak again for three minutes?
If there's a hand, if there's a hand raised, I would say, given the forum that we're in.
Well, I think if we do that, we'll have every hand raised. So we we can certainly do that. But before we go down that path, I will not allow some people to speak and others. It's either everybody or nobody.
We're three hours deep already.
I mean, we we had a process. We had a process to sign up to speak. So if we open the floor, we could.
I know. That's why I'm saying this. It's not, it's somebody and I know them and I like them or whatever, but somebody else I don't like them. We're we're not doing that. It's either anybody who wants to speak and and we can do that. I don't, there might be fifteen, twenty people. But I'll think there are fifty people. We can certainly do that. If we'd like to open it up for public comment before we go further, even though we don't really have an action proposed. Before we address that, I don't want to forget one thing. This, the language Steve proposed, this will not make any of the haters happy. I mean, Darrell, I know you read this stuff, these people, and I hope the haters don't get angry with me, but their stuff was ridiculous. That, I I mean, maybe I'm being too progressive here. But what we talked about, Clifton is committed to racial equality, racial justice and healing. We're going to get the same crap from these people as well. They're going to hate that just as much. In fact, they may hate it more because the the problem the other one had was it actually has a weakness where they can actually point to issues. What could you point to on this? But this will inflame them just as much. If we have this language, they will not like this. This was the All Lives Matter story. All lives do matter. I get that. But that's not what this is about. E pluribus unum, MAGA twenty twenty.
Blue Lives Matter.
Yeah, I didn't have anybody propose anything that sounded like this. And I don't think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're not putting this up because you think this will appease the haters. I I I don't think it will appease them at all.
No, I I'm I'm trying. Again, I I take John Lewis at his word. I'm trying to attract more people. We already attracted and we achieved the Black Lives Matter people who support that. I want to broaden this. I want to get even more people involved, and I want to tell them what the objective is. And so some of them didn't, we're uncomfortable with those words, fine. Let's let's get some other words, but we have, we have problems in this country. We we have systemic racism in this country. And that's not, I'm not calling anybody a racist. But I did, as I've said in two meetings now, start going around town and reading the signs that we have and listening to the people who know the history and say, you know, we left out. That's systemic racism. That's what it is. We we left out the history of an entire people. And we've got to correct that. So, no, my objective is to broaden our support. That's what I'm trying to do.
So we've got
Two sets there. We skipped the Native Americans and we skipped the founders of the town. So we'll back it way up.
Get them in there. We we love them too. Yes, well, hey, to the extent it opens our mind to more. And that was always the thing I thought was so weird about those hate emails was by saying you support black lives, it means you hate everyone else. And I was like, I don't really get, like, did you not go to logic class? I don't understand that. It's very strange. It doesn't mean you hate everybody because at this particular time, you want to say, let's support this particular group. Do we want to take a a little opportunity here and anybody who wants to talk? I mean, this is a big deal. Let the hand raiser speak for three minutes each. My guess is there's probably not more than five, six. I don't know if we let people who've already spoken speak again, but, you know, that's the way we would typically do it in meetings. Five, six, maybe ten of them, and we give them three minutes each, and that gives us time to think about things. People want to do that?
I don't have any plans for the rest of the evening, so I'm open to it.
I mean, I personally don't want to do that, to be honest, because are we going to do that for every issue that we bring up and change the complete process to to sign up? I mean.
No, this one's different because there, I mean, this this issue is different with all the things that we've got on the agenda. So I I wouldn't see this as a wholesale change. Although I will tell you, if it's six months from now and we have five people in the in who are signed up on Zoom and the usual stuff we've got, kind of boring stuff on the agenda, and those five people want to talk later in the meeting, I'm happy to do that. A lot of the processes we put in place here was to keep control of the meeting and not lose control of the meeting. So, you know, I don't know that we have the potential to do that. I wouldn't have it for all the others, the bluebird boxes or whatever, but perhaps for this. And I'm not saying we have to. In fact, I will tell you, my immediate response was, no, we told people to sign up. And, you know, if they have something to say, send a text or an email to one of the council members. They can read it. And if they feel strongly about it, they can advocate for it. So there's a route to do that. But, you know, I did, some of the people are very like, I'm being left out. I don't have an opportunity. I've got something really important to say. And I thought I would at least ask the council. I can go either way.
I I think it's unfair. You had a process in place. You advertised that process. And now you're going to change the process mid-meeting. I just, I think that's unfair because others may have thought I wanted to get in here, but I didn't meet the deadline. So I'm not going to be able to speak and I'm not attending. Anyway, just my two cents. I mean, I also support the people in the town who want to speak. I can see who has their hand raised and like that person and think they have a lot of value to add. I just think you had a process and it's unfair to change it midstream.
How come? How do you know who has their hands raised?
You had to click on attendees. So click participants and then click on attendees in the upper right.
You know, I would I would tend to agree with Melissa, but in that in that this is not an emergency and knowing that we do have additional input out there and probably even beyond that, to make another decision, we could delay this decision for another meeting. we could delay this decision for another meeting that would allow us to get through the, the VDOT permit and the repair of the, uh, sign apparatus and then, uh, bring up the wording, uh, again in a month. It's certainly, certainly not a hair on fire situation to come up with something tonight.
I mean, delay, delay, delay. I mean, we voted on this in June. It got torn down by vandals. It would still be hanging there right now.
Well, I think one of the issues that, uh, you know, that rubbed people the wrong way in town was the, the process of, of what happened in June. So, you know.
Well, I don't, I don't think-
Cutting off the conversation again today and then, uh, putting another vote through with hands raised in the, in the audience without listening. It's just, you know, again, I go back to what, what should the town do? The town should, you, use the time that we have available because quite likely nothing's gonna happen for another thirty days by the time we get a, a blanket permit in place and the, uh, sign apparatus repaired. So, you know.
I, I would still propose for a vote tonight. I, 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 I would make a motion for a vote tonight. I, I, I agree with you Reagan that it's not going to get us a sign up in twenty days because we have to go through these other processes that you've, you've mentioned. But I don't think that we should allow the vandals, uh, to play the process. Uh, we've, I think Bill made it very clear why we put this on the agenda, why we said what we were gonna do, the way we said we were gonna do it. Uh, everybody has had a chance to talk. Uh, I, I tend to agree with Melissa that we shouldn't start changing how we talk now because there's a very select group of people who are still with us tonight. Uh, and I respect them all, but I don't think we should change the process at this point. I think we should, you know, take the bit in our teeth and decide what we're gonna do. Uh, and, and I would make a motion, uh, that, that we prepare for a sign, uh, that would say Clifton is committed to racial equality, justice and healing. Uh, and that it be put up for thirty days as soon as we can after we do the processes Reagan that, that you just pointed out.
Second.
Okay. Clifton is committed to racial equality, justice and healing?
Right.
Daryl? Yes. Okay. I'm committed. Um, discussion. Um, a- and look Reagan and Pat, you, you don't need to say anything you don't want to, but just wondering, one of the thoughts is, um, is the language something that's more, um, workable? From your perspective, or perhaps it's all the same. I don't know. And you don't need to speak to that. But just thought I'd put that out there to see what your sense is, cuz I, I sure want everybody to, um, be on board at some level. And also I'll ask Steve who made the motion, does your motion imply that after this, we will put up additional banners of to be determined messaging? Or is this only for this?
No, this is only for this. I, I said that again, two meetings ago and last meeting, and I think Daryl repeated it this time. I think this was an extraordinary situation with twenty million people in the streets. I think it was a, a, uh, sea change for this entire country. And I think Clifton has to be a part of that sea change and a part of that education and a part of that process. But no, I don't think, uh, this opens the floodgates to, to other messages and, and I'm just not worried that we would, as a commit, as a council, vote that way.
And you are not proposing such a thing by implication or otherwise? Okay, this is the first of many, like a monthly comic book or something. It's not that. Um, and you, does your motion also include, uh, five hundred dollars to, uh, acquire the banner?
The banner, yes.
And for Pat and Reagan, it should not be lost. That's real money that can be used elsewhere. So, just so everybody knows what's going on, it's, it's a real thing. And this-
Bill, Bill, one, one other thing. Uh, Pat can answer this question. Do we need to allocate money for whatever the restrictions for the structure?
Yeah, I mean, the, the parts for the structure might be a couple hundred bucks. Um, probably the only thing we haven't talked about is if we're gonna try to move those cables that cross the road that kinda get in the way of the banner. If we have to raise that banner to meet the twenty-one feet, we almost need to move those cables. And it's either Verizon or, or Cox or somebody's equipment.
I, I think it's Verizon, yeah.
So if we wanna go down that path, there may be costs from those companies to come and rework that stuff.
Well, then I would add to my proposal, uh, the reasonable costs for reestablishing the equipment and if necessary, raising the wires.
So I, I have a, um, I have a, uh, a bid from the person who did the sign that they will make a new banner, uh, with the same weight and so forth, um, size at, for three fifty.
That the same, you mean the same text or a new banner with whatever text we want at three fifty?
Um, I mean, I hadn't approached him about new text, but I can't see why that would matter. They, it's, it's not like it's types that, you know, it, it's digital, so whatever we would want it to say. But, I mean, perhaps we approve it up to the original amount and, and then just in case that does change it. But I just wanted you to know that he had reduced it for us, understanding, you know, what had happened, uh, to three fifty.
But again, again, Melissa, uh, and I think again, Pat would be the one who knows this at the end of the day. I think one of the problems was that that sign was too long and that's why those extensions were put on. So before we order any signs, we have to make sure we know what the size is properly done.
I think, um, that it two hundred and fifty inches is the size that, you know, the original, um, uh, poles, you know, the, the structure that was built. So that's twenty feet and it was twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Um, so if we reduce it, so it's about twenty feet, almost twenty-one feet is what two hundred and fifty inches is. So I could have him reduce it to that size and it would fit the pole structure without the additions that we had to add to fit the twenty-five foot banner. Which by the way, the Homes Tour banner is twenty-five feet and other banners. So I don't know how it morphed over the years and, you know, um, but anyway, I think we go back to twenty feet to just be on the safe side. And maybe what we do is we add to the motion, the language and that when you, when the banner is raised, it's up for thirty days. And that will give time for Pat to, to be able to estimate whether it's twenty-one feet right now and, and if those cables do have to be moved. But at least tonight, we, we are, we are moving forward and not having to go through another meeting again. You know, so let's approve the language. Let's approve raising it for thirty days once it's raised.
I would strongly recommend that the council consider, uh, recognizing the congregation of the Second Baptist. And I don't, Bill, if you need to go into more detail of exactly what transpired over the last several weeks that I think is very, very, very current, very pertinent, very relevant to what we're trying to achieve and, and, you know, attract a message from the town that has a, you know, more impactful in my eyes statement. And if, if people inquire about that or wanna generate a Washington Post news article about what happened and what was reversed and how a congregation of, uh, two hundred to two hundred and fifty people that had dwindled to eight, uh, could, could very well be, uh, restored here in the town of Clifton.
I like, I like-
I would further recommend that we don't vote on any specific, uh, issues that aren't directly pertinent to the town until we have a, a larger conversation about whether or not it's appropriate for the town to take those on and perhaps even consider putting that into our sign ordinance, which would have a period of, uh, uh, public comment.
Um, cou- couple things. One, the, the banner rules talk about signs being, uh, banners being sixteen feet by two and a half feet. So just, I'm not sure where the twenty-five came from, but, uh, I think twenty might be max. Cuz, a- and we probably need to change our banner rules if we're gonna go with twenty by three or whatever. As, and I think the reason for the two and two and a half was there were times when they were hanging two, uh, one below the other. And if, uh, twenty-one feet is tight, it's really tight with, with two. So, um, just on sizing, the banners rules say sixteen by two and a half. That, that might be too narrow. It could be the twenty works, but just wanted to put that out there. Um, Second Baptist, I think that's a great idea. I think if we had to wait thirty days to do that, I think that would be okay too. Um, I do think that if we change direction a hundred and eighty degrees to something else like, um, welcome back Major League Baseball or something, not that Second Baptist is that. But it might look like we were, uh, um, the, the vandals made us stop our, our voice. We weren't speaking anymore. And the language we have here is clearly a progression and evolution of that, so it doesn't do that. Um, I do think, uh, remember the discussion we had about how we specifically, we talked about this at length in the special meeting and then we said, wait, let's make sure it's on the agenda so everybody has an opportunity to look at it. And per ironically, the comment we got early, not, not that I hate it, but just saying, um, the comment that we put in the specific language because that's exactly what we had decided we were gonna do. And I'm thinking, no, 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 that's not it. It was more so that everybody knew exactly what was being proposed in case they loved it or hated it or whatever. Doesn't mean we had to do it. But to be sure, as a result, anybody paying attention knows we were talking about a banner and knows what, if we were talking about having it say, what we're talking about here is consistent with that. Um, so I don't see any notice issue here. Uh, people know. Um, probably no matter what you do, we could wait a year and they, they wouldn't like it, some people. So I don't know that we have a notice issue, um, here. And, um, o- on the cable, if we're waiting around for Verizon to move their cables before we can put a banner up, I think we might be waiting a long time. I do recognize that VDOT might go, you know what? It's only eighteen feet. No way. Not gonna happen. Well, that, that could be. And we may be stuck for years before we can do this because of the Verizon cables. But I think we would put it up based on what's currently there and the height that's currently there. And if we look at, uh, removing the Verizon cables or moving them up or something like that, that that's a longer term thing. It's a great idea. They look like crap. Uh, they should go. It's those big old bundles. We don't want them. But I don't know that I would make putting this banner up contingent on that. And I'd warn that if we do make a contingent on that, you won't be seeing a banner for a long time. A- and, and we can still do that. That's okay. And VDOT might insist that we do that, but then again, they might not based on thirty, forty years of, um, of practice with-
Incident free.
Yeah. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a contingent on that, but I do think it is a good long-term solution to look at. So those are just ideas I, I wanted to put out there.
So Bill, let me just clarify. So Steve has a, a motion, I, I believe he had placed for the language and I, and I think it was seconded and then we had some more discussion. Um, so I think we need to bring this to a vote. Um, and perhaps we need to change and add the, the size. Um, just to meet with, you know, the actual policy because we haven't changed it yet. So sixteen by two and a half, I think you said.
Yeah, or i- i- if people are okay with that, unless we wanna go outside and tonight say we want it to be twenty by two and a half because the, i- i- sixteen would be ten feet narrower than what was up there. And what was up there was huge, but-
I mean, I, I think the, the actual mechanism itself allowed for two hundred and fifty inches. And, and so that's, that's about twenty feet.
I, I don't think any of that has to be in, in the motion. I think what the motion is, is to, to put up a sign that complies with whatever is designed to hang signs. Uh, so I, I don't think we have to put that in the motion at all. We don't know exactly. So-
Yeah, I just wanna know what to order.
Well, I, I'd say wait with ordering until we found out. Um, but the, the motion is to, to adopt a sign, adopt the language and adopt the finances to pay for the sign.
Define a timeframe.
And, and, and thank you, and a timeframe of thirty days, um, from when it's put up, obviously. Um, and the mechanics, uh, we will deal with, uh, both with VDOT and, uh, Pat figuring out how to safely design a new thing that goes up. Uh, but that doesn't have to be in, in the, uh,
Yeah.
And it's all-
I agree with what Reagan said too, um, about a banner for the Second Baptist. But I do believe we need to raise this banner and then perhaps at our next council meeting or after the thirty days, we raise that as an issue and I, I think it's a great idea.
Well, we, we would have to ask the Second Baptist Church first and, and they may want to have an event, which would be perfect for our signs, which is, are generally event signs. They may say, well, give us a little time and we're gonna put a, a whole event together. That would be great.
Right.
Um, a- and this is, can, it's conditioned on the VDOT blanket permit, right?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. All right. So we're discussing till we run out of discussion. I'm trying to make sure no one has any burning issues here. Um, and once we're done discussion and there's no further discussion, we'll bring it to a vote. So, um, yeah, lots of words. So probably speaks to a twenty by three foot sign, but we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a, um, we got a motion, we've got a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. We'll do a, a roll call vote. Holloway, I?
Fros, I.
No, I.
You're muted Reagan.
McDonald's saying.
Oh, I.
Pline, I.
All right. Um, well, thank you. Uh, and, uh, to get, get through that, and I know to the extent that we're discussing it and it's emotional for, for us, it's gonna be forceful and impactful to, uh, the community. And look, just like last time, there was a question of what's gonna happen? Well, I don't know. We'll see. It will be interesting to see. I hope it will be positive things that will come out of it. I'm sure we'll get a lot of questions about what is the intent of what you're doing. Uh, one of the things I like, a, a lot of time was spent tonight to come up with this, this language, this message. It's pretty hard to read this without knowing what the intent of the message is. And they go, are you really supporting this, that, or the next thing? It's like pretty clear on its face. So there is some great benefit to that, I think. But you know what? Like last time, we will see. All right. Uh, moving on in other signage matters, request to add dead end sign to Dell Avenue.
So, uh, Jim Chesley has already requested this, um, from VDOT. Uh, so that is in the process. I didn't know if we also wanted to have the town council approve it. Should VDOT, you know, agree to put that sign up? Um, and the reason that this is being asked for by Dell is that, you know, the traffic has greatly increased in the town of recent years. And, um, people, it's a very, very narrow street, even, you know, it's like Chestnut. Um, and when they head down the street, there's nowhere for them to turn around except in people's driveways. And, you know, we have somebody who, um, is, the person who requested this action is, is deaf that lives on our road. Um, and we also have small children. So we, we are trying to take as many measures as possible right now from people racing down a very narrow street and then turning around. Um, and, and just making it generally unsafe that perhaps they won't even enter our street if they know it's a dead end.
Uh, should we do the same for Chestnut and, uh,
I think, I, Chapel has a small little, it's about this big, you know, that fits on an, on a sign already that says dead end, but it certainly doesn't draw attention. Um, but I, I mean, I don't think Chestnut would be against it either. They're incredibly narrow and, um, and maybe, and maybe Chapel would like a bigger one than, I don't know.
I think the flow of traffic, because it's right off of Kinchlo or whatever that is right there, you know, as you're going up that hill, I think some people mistakenly just go up Dell thinking that's forward. Um, I don't know that folks on Chestnut run into that issue, although I'm not opposed to a dead end sign on Chestnut either.
Yeah, here, here's my, here, here's my thought on it. Uh, strangely, whenever we put up, um, signs in town, people complain because they- Uh, strangely, whenever we put up, um, signs in town, people complain because they don't like signs in town. So, um, we should be judicious in our support for additional signage. And where people have said, you know, I don't like signs, but here we really need a sign, like, okay, cool. Um, in this case, we have a particular request from Dell Avenue, they really want a sign, they got a need for a sign. So we can have the council support, support. Putting up a sign, we're not gonna mandate it's put up because we can't, it's up to V dot. Um, we're not gonna require it, but rather we can say that we support putting it up. If a sign in fact goes up there, we may have people from Chestnut and Chapel go, wow, that's a great idea. We'd like one of those too, and then we can support that too. And there will be a conduit established to V dot where they'll know how to get. This done by having it done in, in Dell instead of jumping out on the other two and saying, let's put one up there, maybe they want it. Um, they, they probably do, but let's let them come back and ask and then. We know that they want that as part of the, the whole, so that, that would be my thought.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, so I'll make a motion that, uh, that, the town council supports. Putting up a. Dead end sign, um, on Dell Avenue.
Would we be, would, would that motion include engaging with V dot to actively support it or responding that we support it if we're asked?
Responding that we supported if we're asked. Chesley's the point guy on this, he knows that if he needs it, I talk to him all the time, if he needs to know the town is on board. Uh, and V dot needs to know that, we, we can do that, but I don't wanna start writing letters, in fact, to that point. Chesley may have it worked out already and so we don't even want to necessarily step in unless we're needed, if we're needed. We got your back on that dead end.
Just clarifying, yep.
Yeah, Jim's got it handled, I just wanted the town council to approve it in case he needed it or V dot needed it.
Wonderful.
Good, good questions all around, so I made a motion, did anybody second it, I, I don't know.
I second it.
Yeah.
Uh, wow, okay, uh, dead end sign Dell Avenue, we support it, um, Holloway I.
Fros I.
No, I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
Right, alright, on to more fun issues, the longest item on the agenda in terms of words. Response to Fairfax County History Commission letter. Re-street and places in Clifton named after individuals who held military or governmental responsibilities under. The Confederate States of America, longest, longest title, shortest answer, answer is no. So, um, I thought you guys might like that, so, short background. The county has decided that it's going to do an inventory of every street name or place name or monument. In the county that is named after an individual that held military or governmental responsibility under the. Authority of the Confederate States of America, but they would explicitly not include. The towns of Herndon, Vienna, or uh, Clifton because they are, have their own governments and they're welcome to do what they want. So, um, the History Commission of Fairfax County said, wouldn't it be nice if they ask us? The same question and ask us to do what the county didn't ask us to do. Um, so you know, we're, we're good people, we'll go along with it, so it's not a big town, thankfully. They also offered that they could provide staff to do extensive research and they have databases. Uh, instead, fortunately, we have a bunch of people that are really into history. And I've consulted with the History Commission and in particular, uh, Margot Cos Robbie. Who looked at all of this and came back with a two-letter answer, which is no. Um, a- and after probing about what about Pendleton, if anybody wants to know the story, it's really long. But the Pendleton dude was, um, uh, private or something in the Union Army, in fact. And is the son-in-law of Margaret Hetzel, not Suzanne Rivera Hetzel. Okay, so, there's lots of detail on this and there are things like water, which we assume is named after water, not. Water, but, but rather names, so the answer is no, we will report back to them that the answer is no. I wanted to let you guys know, we had been asked this question, so you're not surprised. And that we have in fact diligently done the research and the answer is no, which is good. Cause, not good, but for, cause, cause we don't have these names, or rather good, cause there's just nothing to worry.
Anything else for us to do, yeah.
Yeah, and, and you know, as we, look, Steve talked about the hidden history of Clifton, Second Baptist, the people laughing at me about the nineteen eighties. And stuff, right, and they're telling me stories, there was a, a, a woman there who was born in the, the house. That Mark and Mona live in, and she showed me a scar on her cheek that she got from falling on those, those rocks. That are on that wall, if you ever walked by there and went, what's up with those rocks? She's asking the same thing, back literally, she's like seventy or something and she had the scar, very, very cool stuff. So there's a bunch of history there, but it's not surprising when you think about the development of Clifton, that we don't have a whole bunch of Confederate stuff here. That's not what this town is all about, and then we'll add one very important thing, as long as we're all here. One of the things they told me was, they grew up fifty, sixties in Clifton and they said Clifton was always an integrated town. Black and white hung out together, fished together, did stuff together, they never had any issues in Clifton. It was only when they got out to other places, you know, where they would have to go to school in Manassas. Or over to Luther Jackson and Maryfield or something like that, then they would encounter it, but not in Clifton, which I thought was, uh. Like really cool, that Clifton is a different place. And I would say it's called being Berean, don't take my word for it, you can actually listen to the people themselves. Um, when we get together with these guys, which I'm really looking forward to and I really appreciate Reagan. Coming up and talking about that, about we need to do something to welcome these guys, it's gonna be magic. And, and we're all gonna learn so much about it and fill in this time, everybody obsesses eighteen eighty, eighteen ninety, this happened and that happened and then. Nineteen eighty-five, blah, 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 but there's like this giant missing piece. We have an opportunity to fill that in, and I said, you guys got pictures, like, oh yeah, we got pictures and I remember when this was done and that was done, so. It's gonna be great, that's the backstory to, it's actually not surprising that we don't have a bunch of Confederate names here. This town grew up differently than a lot of other places and. We, we should feel pretty good about that, but, but we should con- continue to carry the flame forward. As we're talking about, and not just talking about, but people are actually doing. Okay, so there's nothing to do on county commission, blah, 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 I'm gonna send an answer back saying, saying, no. Um, we got.
What you just said, Bill sparks a thought, is that we, you know, the, the banner isn't the only way to communicate in town. Putting, putting something visible with a message on it in the parking lot up there, a Second Baptist. Seems like something we could do a lot faster and it. It would have, it would have the same effect, you know, maybe not as publicly noticeable, but certainly for the congregation. It would be something that would be equally impactful for those individuals.
Yeah, that would be cool, well, let's talk, let's talk about that and brainstorm, I mean. Uh, Steve Jones, who's doing a lot of incredible work with me on Second Baptist, talks to these people, you know, for better, for worse. I'm sure they're tired of hearing from Steve, but he talks to them five times or more a day, every day. And, uh, we see these people every Sunday for hours at a time. So we got a great dialogue, but we need to keep that going. And then ultimately expand that as well and what Reagan just talked about, more ways to communicate that message. I'll tell people the story about it, it's long, it's interesting, there are amazing stories and all kinds of stuff. Not here, but if anybody ever wants to hear, uh, or we can sit around the campfire, what happened there is, is amazing and. For those of you who haven't heard, uh, they got their church back and now we're in the process of standing the church up again after. Close to ten years where they were disenfranchised, the families are back in there and we're getting things moving along again and. You know, they're all really happy about it, so it's been a real. Success story, you know, who knows how things happen or why, but I will tell you that it was driven by the actions. Um, that this council took was, I would say, without that, it would not have occurred. And, uh, the involvement of some of the people and their willingness to say, you know, easy it is to say, oh, not now, I got other stuff to do. But to say, you know what, I'm gonna dig in, let's, let's go, let's do it, um, that initiative. Is, is different as a result of the actions this town has taken, it has made a real difference in people's lives. Um, moving along, we have the Freedom of Information, Pat, you then said no need for that, are we still cool?
It, it, it's just housekeeping and it's really, cause we're, we're a town of over two hundred and fifty now, there's certain things you're posted on our website, we, we, we can do that later.
Okay, cool, and that brings us to additional compensation for staff for COVID nineteen related work and increased work scope during COVID nineteen. Alright, what's going on there? Um. I, I don't know if you guys have noticed, there's a lot more stuff going on, I don't know why, because of COVID, people. Have become smarter, they got more going on, they're more creative, I don't know, but there's a lot going on. And it's meant that our staff is working harder than they ever have. Um, Marilyn with work on the, the COVID CARES Grant, the meetings with Fairfax County, a lot of additional hours on that. Amanda, all this Zoom meeting stuff and everything else, lots of additional time is being spent by our staff and I was contacted by. Uh, one of the staff members basically saying, look, I'm just getting worn out here, I mean, I'm working extraordinary amount of hours. Um, right now and it looks like it's gonna go on for a while, so. What I've asked, um, that one staff member, I asked both staff members if they can keep track of hours. That they're doing that they wouldn't have done but for COVID. That we look at attaching, uh, an hourly rate to that, which our town attorney has told me. There's a rate in the federal regulations you can attach. And then we can, uh, pay additional compensation to them that would be covered under the, um, CARES Act funding. That we have.
Terrific.
And what my hope is, in six months, in nine months, my hope, I'm probably not the only one, that the pandemic will be over. And more important than the international pandemic would be decreasing the workload for the town council. Um, that the clerk and others will have less to do, but yes, they will both go hand in glove, hopefully, if you will, things will get back to normal. But for now, they're not normal and, uh, I'd like to find a way if we can provide additional compensation for them.
Was that an attempt to humor Bill?
Yeah, but it's late. Um, it was, it was, but, uh, I don't know, Kerouac-esque, just sort of rambling, I'm reading Thomas Wolfe.
Oh, I got you.
Yes, so. Anyway, uh, we want to find a way to increase compensation, Steve has talked about maybe what we do is create a, a, a. Position that would be COVID treasurer or something, I don't, I don't quite know how to do it. And tonight, I don't believe we're gonna be in a position to approve the payment of X, extra dollars. Um, but I do think that by next meeting, we would be able to. Uh, with the council being on board, that this is something that we'd like to do, that we should do.
I'm a hundred percent in favor of it, I would support a motion right now if one was put forward. I think our staff should be compensated for the additional workload, it's fair.
Yeah, and, and that additional workload would be prior work as well.
Absolutely, they should be made whole. On a go-forward and on a go-forward basis.
I've been working with Marilyn on this crazy stuff with the CARES Act and, and, you know, and Amanda has been. Running crazy with all the Zoom meetings and all of that stuff, absolutely, they should be paid, uh, what, I don't know that we can pay them what they're worth. But, uh.
We don't have that much in the budget.
Have that much, that's right, but, uh, I think that we can all as a council agree to say, yes, this is what we're gonna do and we find out what the legal maximum is. That we can give them and, and do so.
Yep. Um, as it, as it pertains to workload, I don't know if this is an appropriate point to bring it up, but, um. Amanda and I have been working with our web developers to find ways to leverage the town website to reduce workload for our committees and our staff. Um, so, look for some communications on that, uh, more specifically in the coming month.
Great.
Okay, I. I, I'd like to make a motion that it is the sense of the town council that we should increase compensation for our staff. To accommodate their additional efforts for, uh, that are related to COVID nineteen.
Second.
Guys, the motion is a second, you're all saying, how much is that, the answer is, I don't know, we'll figure that out next meeting. But I do want us tonight to say, yes, we wish to do this, and then at the next meeting, we'll be talking about the mechanics. Of how many dollars, and that means you'll have another bite at the apple on the specific amount. But I'd like the council to be on record saying that we support that, any further discussion? Okay, Holloway I.
Fros I.
Film I.
McDonald I.
Oh, I.
Fine, I.
Right, um, what's left, um, next is adjournment. No, no, don't all do it at once.
Go ahead, Daryl.
I moved to adjourn.
Do it by acclamation, all in favor.
I.
Opposed, abstentions. Thanks, everyone, long meeting, a lot of important stuff, appreciate everyone's professionalism, but, um. You know, stick to your guns on what your beliefs are, but be respectful of each other. We have a lot of diverse views and that's great, I appreciate all that and, uh, nobody should be withholding what their ideas are. But, uh, the extent we all treat each other with civility and professionalism. It enables us to know we're in a forum where you can speak with respect and with trust, so. Thanks for all of that and, uh, with all of that, good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, take care.
See ya.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do I need to turn the video off?
Yeah, if you can do that.
How you do that?
Um, you see up in the left-hand corner?
Left-hand line.
Yeah, can you click on that and see if you can end the stream maybe?
Stop livestream, yes?
Yes.